Thank you, everyone. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning. My name is Andy Hunt-Housen, and I'm pretty loud today. Uh, to my left is Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
To his left is Nadine McCarty. She'll be taking care of us today. Good morning, Nadine. And to her left, Greg McNally, Director of Planning and Community Development. Morning, Greg. My right, Commissioner Candace Payne.
Good morning, Andy.
We have Nico Hash and Keegan Shea from the County Attorney's Office. Good morning. And Roger Baltz, C A O, Chief Administrative Officer for the county. Good morning, Roger.
Morning.
Uh, there is sign-in sheet in the front as well as agendas. We'd like everyone to sign in, please, prior to leaving, so we have a good record of who's attended our meeting today. Uh, I want to do one housekeeping item prior to jumping into our consent action items, and that is, uh, with Commissioners, with your approval, uh, I would like to, uh, move number five on the agenda, which is preliminary plat application to number six and Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one hundred, which is item number six to number five, because number four and number five are related, and they'll be presented by the same person, so I wanted to kind of do them back to back, if you're okay with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, so our agenda has been adjusted. With that, we will start with consent action items. Mr. Baltz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is item two A on the agenda today. Public meeting minutes for August twenty-two, twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four. Staff recommends approval of that item. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners? Any public comment on the consent action item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, uh, consent action item two A as presented by Mr. Baltz.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved and seconded approved consent action item two A as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is bid opening for RID overlays. R I D overlays. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Hunt-Housen, Commissioners. My name is Audra Zachroll. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works. This morning, we have a bid opening for the Rural Improvement District Overlay Project. This project consists of asphalt overlays of varying thicknesses in several different rural improvement districts here in Lewis and Clark County. We have four bids to open this morning. You will hear that each bid has two schedules that we will be looking at, um, the bids for. The first schedule is, um, for work to be completed before October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. The second schedule is work to be completed before July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. It's all the same work. We're trying to decide which one would be, uh, more cost-effective for the county. We are a little, uh, later in the season of getting this bid out, so it's possible that a later bid would bring in a higher cost to try to finish the work this year. So we're giving, uh, them an option of doing it next spring, early summer, uh, to try to get a better cost. So we'll see here as soon as we open these bids.
Great.
Hey, this first bid that I'm going to open is from Advantage Asphalt Paving LLC out of Missoula, Montana. The bid security has been included. The bid appears to be fully complete. And again, I mentioned we have two schedules. The first schedule is for work to be completed before Oc- October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. This contractor has chosen not to submit on that date for, for a schedule, um, for Schedule One. They have submitted for Schedule Two. And the total of all extended prices for Schedule Two is four hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. And the second bid that I'll be opening is from Cap Paving of East Helena, Montana. And the bid security has been included. The bid appears to be fully complete. I have two schedules to read on this bid. For Schedule One, the total of all extended prices for Schedule One work totals two hundred eighty-four thousand, ninety-five dollars and seventy-one cents. The total of all extended prices for Schedule Two work, two hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Okay, the third bid that I will be opening is from Helena Sand and Gravel Incorporated of Helena, Montana. Hey, uh, bid security has been included. The bid appears to be fully complete. I have two schedules to read. The total of extended prices for Schedule One work is two hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents. The total of all extended prices for Schedule Two work, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-five cents. All right, the fourth and final bid that I will be opening this morning is from Hoffman's R and M Services out of Butte, Montana. Okay, the bid security has been included. The bid appears to be fully completed. I have two schedules to read. The total of all extended prices for Schedule One work, three hundred ten thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and sixteen cents. Total of all extended prices for Schedule Two work, two hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred eleven dollars and no cents.
Thank you very much. Timing.
Timing, yes. So, um, staff recommends that the, uh, board allow us to take these bids under advisement and come back on September nineteenth, that's a Thursday, uh, with a, uh, recommendation for award.
Thank you very much. And just for explanation for those who might be watching here today or watching on TV, um, we open all of our bids in a public setting, as we just did, and it's the first time we've heard them as well. Um, we take a preliminary look. As Audra said, it looks like everything's here, but until we actually take those, uh, staff takes those bids back and really looks at them, make sure that they, um, are, uh, bids that comply with both county policy and state law, uh, they can't make a recommendation yet. So, uh, they will do that, and we will have them back on the nineteenth to make a recommendation to the Commission about which bid to, uh, move forward, if any. So Commissioners, with that explanation, uh, how about a motion? Well, let's take any, just to see if there's any public comment on this item. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay. A motion to ask, uh, staff to take the bids under advisement, bring back a recommendation to this Commission on the nineteenth?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that, uh, we refer the four bids to, uh, staff and ask them to come back with a recommendation on which bid to accept, uh, on, uh, September nineteenth.
Second.
Moved and seconded to take the bids under advisement, make a recommendation to this Commission on the nineteenth. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, appreciate it. Uh, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of school district mill levies for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. And the County Superintendent could be with us today, but our Chief Financial Officer, Frank Cornwell, is here today. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Is your microphone on there?
Uh, yes.
Good. All right.
Yes, so, uh, my name is Frank Cornwell. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the county, and I am filling in for Katrina Cheney today, who is, um, doing a, well, lending out a helpful hand and subbing for one of the schools. So that's one of those duties that she does, um, to, to help all those little schools out there. Um, as you have in, uh, in front of you is the mill sheet for the school levies. Um, just keep in mind that Katrina Chan- Cheney kind of works with these school districts similarly like we do with our departments, and she puts together their budgets, gets them all calculated and put together, and she goes to the State, um, Office of Public In- of Instruction, or O P I, and uses their website to help calculate their millage. Once that millage is calculated, she gets it validated from them, and then she puts it on this sheet for you to approve. Um, there was no significant changes year over year, except for a reduction in the retirement, um, millage, and other, other than that, there wasn't much noise year over year. The, it's just kind of the same, same thing, um, from last year. But if you, if you had any more additional questions or whatever, I would recommend you ask Katrina, but this is her mill, the results of her mill calculations.
And, um, just as a procedurally and requirement, she has to present them to the Commission. We ultimately have to, um, sign off on them or, or concur, I guess, uh, and, uh, present them to the public as well. So, questions, Commissioners?
Uh, just as a matter of information, I notice, um, the, uh, second line down, Kessler two comma two C is completely blank. And do you have any idea why that's not included?
Uh, this is something that we, we were just, we, we've been talking about. It's kind of a legacy item that, um, I believe that my predecessor and the, and the folks downstairs that calculate, that put these on theirs, um, on the mill ta- or the tax rolls, they like to have this kind of history, so that was there before, and it was taken away, and we just left it on the sheet. Um, I think going forward, we're going to look and maybe clean this up to just include the ones that, um, that we're approving. So this is, it's just a legacy item that used to be on there, and they're no longer, Kessler is no longer a school district.
Okay, is that because Kessler used to be a country school?
Correct.
And then it became, they brought it into the city. Okay.
Correct.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Actually, it's now part of the Helena School District system. It's no longer an independent district. So, excellent, Commissioner. Any other questions, Commissioners? On the school, how about, uh, public comment related to the school county schools levy? Sheet and projections here. Any public comment? Okay, Commissioners, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, uh, I, uh, I, I guess a proper motion on, on this would be to, uh, accept the, uh, levies as presented by this, the County Superintendent.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the school district mill levies for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four as presented by, in this case, by Mr. Cornwell, but ultimately, yes, by, uh, Superintendent, County Superintendent of Schools, Cheney. Any further discussion, Commissioners?
Just, Mr. Chair, there's just one opportunity, one more opportunity to discuss a kind of an ongoing difference of opinion about those mill levies. There, there's a school equalization levies totaling ninety-five mills, and many of us thought that, that, that those should be reduced to a, um, more, much more moderate increase. In Lewis and Clark County, for example, um, the taxable valuations, uh, increased from the twenty-two, twenty-three year, uh, to the twenty-three, twenty-four year by thirty point two percent. And, uh, the, by not indexing those, uh, mill levies for equalization, uh, the State General Fund got a windfall of, of, um, about thirty point two percent, uh, in, in the, uh, um, in the, uh, State General Fund and where, uh, which seems like, like when they require us to, to live within a budget, as the state legislature does, um, that they should be living within that same budget as well. And I understand that it's gone through the court systems. The court seems to have agreed with, with the legislature, but I would highly recommend that they look at index, indexing those tax levies in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments this time?
So, if I may comment, um, and now I get to apply for a six hundred and ninety-five dollar tax refund as part of the return on the overtaxation that the Department of Revenue granted to us because they didn't bother to index, as Commissioner Rolfe has very wisely suggested. So I'm all excited about my six hundred and seventy-five dollar tax refund. Right before election.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay. Any further comment? With that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, as, um, said at the outset, we are moving number six to number five. So the fifth item on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one hundred, providing for the annual tax levy in mills for the fiscal year July one, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Cornwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for moving the, uh, agenda item up so we can do these concurrently. Uh, Nadine, do you, I have a presentation. Thank you. All right, so, uh, as the Chairman said, we're here to now go over the county's budget, um, or mill levy spreadsheet that we, we do every year. This is the last piece of the budget for the new fiscal year, requiring action from the Commission. After this, we will submit our budget book to the Department of Administration at the end of the month. During the budget process, the revenue base is established by estimating new growth with known inflationary factor of the two-point and two-point eight percent this year, which is as high as I've ever seen it, or probably the highest it's ever been. Um, the Department of Revenue certifies those tax values by the first, uh, Monday of August. After we receive the certified values, we calculate and verify and validate our revenues that we had budgeted for the year. Um, and that those certified values are what we use to ca- uh, calculate these mill, these mills in front of you that you see for you today. Um, what is presented is all, on that, uh, attachment A is all the county properties, levies, um, including countywide and outside the incorporated cities, all the special assessments and special districts. Here's the, the, I guess, the top third of that, um, long mill spreadsheet that you have. Uh, this sheet is part of the attachment A to, to the resolution, which is an internal reference for the finance and accounting and tax departments to calculate the tax bills for the year. You can see at the top of the sheet, the cities and statewide levies. On the left-hand side of the sheet, uh, you'll see the county levies, and then down towards the bottom, you'll see planning and road levies. On the right-hand side, the, you'll see the countywide school levies, which was, what was just presented to you, all of those numbers from Katrina's spreadsheet loaded here. Um, I would just, just to point out, because we use this as an example through, um, later on in this presentation, uh, Helena School District One, uh, is being milled at three hundred and sixty-eight, uh, mills point four-nine. Um, when you add all those mills together with the, including the city, uh, City of Helena's levy and state levies, the countywide levy is six hundred and ninety-two point three-seven mills, which is the total mills a taxpayer in the city is going to pay on those tax bills. So that's just a typical taxpayer within the city. And you'll see why that's important later in the, when we bring up our example. And then the middle part of the spreadsheet is, uh, we'll, we'll start looking at the special districts, which you'll start seeing highlights, um, for new special districts and then highlights for change, uh, special district mills, um, or rates or fees. Um, for example, the valley irrigation operation went from twenty-nine dollars to thirty-two dollars. It's a three-dollar increase. It is something that irrigation district comes to us and tells us what the adjustment is to their, um, rate is this year. Uh, this slide shows the hundreds of R I Ds the county has within, uh, the district or within the county. Uh, the new R I Ds, again, are highlighted in green. The ones that have been adjusted have been, are highlighted in yellow. All of these have been presented to you by Jessica Makas. Um, so these are all just a result of those presentations. Now they're on the spreadsheet here to be approved by you today. Again, Jessica Makas' work, continuation of the R I Ds, um, because we couldn't fit it all on one slide. Um, and then right below the, uh, the regular R I Ds is the, the R I D debt, and you'll see that we have take, we have two new, uh, or no, three new debt R I Ds for Juniper Lucky Strike and, or Ophino Subdivision. Those are, um, intercap loans that are used to help main cash flow, the maintenance of these R I Ds. Something very routine and typical. You also see there is four of them that dropped off this year that were paid off. Kind of getting into our example of a mill levy calculation here. So this is one of our, um, department's mill levies, or, um, we're just going to show public health. The Public Health Fund last year received a, um, base revenue amount of one point three million dollars. You add in the inflationary factor of two point eight percent, which adds in thirty-seven thousand point seven dollars, and you add in the new taxable growth, that's thirty-five thousand dollars. And, and they get a total revenue for the fiscal year twenty-five of one point four million dollars.
And you're just showing that as an example. There's several of these type funds across the county.
Correct.
So, uh, as you move on here, I just wanted to ask a quick question. So the, the, um, mm, mill levy sheets that you showed in page three, four, and five, essentially, and six, are essentially, um, what we've approved in the annual budget that's already been approved, but you're, you're presenting it in mill form now.
Correct.
Is what, how the taxpayer will see it.
It's just a result of the budget process.
Yeah.
So this, this is, once we go through the budget, we essentially kind of back, back into it with the mills. We make sure after we get our certified values, which validates the budget.
Right.
And okay, this shows that we are within a, um, insignificant range of those revenue amounts that we budgeted for, for, uh, fiscal year twenty-five. As long as it's insignificant, we don't see any, uh, necess- anything necessary for amendments. Those budgets are good to go. And then we use, um, and then those, uh, budgeted amounts that are certified now go on the, the mill spreadsheet.
Get translated into mills.
Yeah, so it goes, it goes through some, uh,
Yeah.
Some fancy calculations, and then it lands on the spreadsheet.
Which you're going to show us now, kind of.
Yeah, in a way, I'm going to try. Um,
Oh, please, Commissioner, sorry.
Frank, this is all, you know, like, Greek to me. So, at the beginning, the top of Attachment A.
What page are you on?
Page three.
Three.
There it is. Right there at the top, it says special, special millages. What is a special millage, and why is it separated out? Uh-oh.
I'm trying to find it.
Just the very top, right under.
Right at, underwear it says Attachment A.
Um, I'm not sure about the phrasing there. I think, I think that was a way to, I mean, summarize all of the millage for the county that you were, um, assessing. So it's just a summary of the city of Helena, City of East Helena, the states, um, and then the, the counties and the, uh, the school districts. It's just a way to show it all into one spot. I'm not sure where the special.
Okay, I think I figured this out. Okay, at the, so, under county millage breakdown. This is just in case there's somebody out there trying to figure this too. Um, at the very, uh, the total on the county millage breakdown inside incorporated cities, it says a hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-one cents, which is the same amount under, it's second from the bottle, bottom up at the special millages, county inside city.
Correct. Yep, that's just showing.
So, and then the two hundred and one point ninety-eight outside incorporated cities, it, I mean, so that is the basis of these figures.
Correct. Yep.
I just love it when all of a sudden clouds clear up. Oh, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. So we're going to go to an example of a hundred thousand dollar home being charged, or these mills, um, being taxed for these mills. I know that it, it is very rare that we find a hundred thousand dollar home in this, this county. I think we're, uh, Commissioner Rolfe brings up the example, most of the time, it's about half a million. I, I believe, and it kind of makes sense to me for easy math, that we use a hundred thou- a hundred thousand, because you can use that result of this, um, calculation to apply. So if it's a hundred thousand, and then you want to apply it to a five hundred thousand dollar home, you would just times it by five. Um, it is, it's just a simple math, just to kind of, kind of keep things rolling.
For example.
Yeah, just, just example, say, yep. So, here's the example of a hundred thousand dollar assessment being taxed at a one point three-five rate, uh, which is the rate for homeowners. Uh, and then the millage being applied, which is, which is one, is a thousandth. Um, so it shows that it's a one dollar thirty-five cent charge for every mill. Um, which then would get, calculate you to be paying nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy cents this year. Um, as compared to last year was nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. So that's a reduction of nineteen dollars and six cents. So if you have a more typical home in Helena, and it's a five hundred thousand dollar home, you're going to have a reduction of close to a hundred dollars. Um, the, I will say that this reduction is mostly due to the, the reduction in the retirement, um, the school levies.
School retirement.
Yeah, the school retirement funds. So on slide ten is just showing you the breakout between the jurisdictions. Um, We have a total mill, we have total mills of six hundred and ninety two point thirty seven that shows fifty three point two two percent is going to state and local levies. Twenty two point oh one percent is going to the city, fifteen point two four is going to the county. Um, and then nine point five three is going to the voted levies of the county. So the county is close to twenty five percent in total.
I liked it, um, point that out to people who might be watching is that we get the honor, if you want to call it an honor or the the task of being the tax collector, but we collect taxes for all these other jurisdictions. The county portion of folks taxes is somewhere between twenty and twenty five percent for all the counties. And that, that includes the county uh, regular taxes and then if there are voted voted taxes on their source, for example, we, we put out a vote few years ago to remodel the detention center. And so, um, if citizens voted for that, so that would be on their tax bill as well. Those are the voted things that, that happen. But the regular everyday running of the county is about the fifteen point two four percent of their tax bill is all. So um, much of that tax bill, fifty three point two percent goes to state and local school levies. And then city is about twenty two percent of that tax bill. So, um, and that changes if they live, if someone lives outside the city and isn't, isn't part of, uh, city taxes. But I just, it's something to point out to folks because we get a lot of feedback at tax time about how we're raising people's taxes or influencing their taxes. And we can have that discussion around the county portion and say, well, here's what happened in the county and how much we taxes went up and for us, it was about two point eight percent is all county taxes went up. Uh, and that, that's high for us is actually is what we were saying, because we by law can only raise taxes one half of the last three years average of inflation for county operations.
Right.
But again, we get to collect the taxes for all the jurisdictions, including East Helena, Helena, the state schools, all that kind of stuff. So anyway, Commissioner, please.
Question, city, is that only the city of Helena or does that include the city of East Helena and the other incorporated, was it Lincoln and?
Good, good question, Commissioner. Uh, this one is just an example of the city of Helena. So this would be if you're in the city of Helena.
Okay, so if you're in the city of East Helena, where does that money show up?
So that, um, I didn't provide an example of that, but in I, I could recalc- or calculate it, but they have millage of a hundred and ninety two point nine seven. Um, I don't know what the value of that is because I'd have to go back and look at their certified values and recount and back, back that in. But
Okay.
Um, it's a much smaller amount that, that they are, um, receiving than what the city of Helena receives.
Certainly. Okay, thank you.
So here's a visualization of how the city of Helena would, would break out when you're paying your taxes and if you live in the city. This shows, you know, the lion's share going to the school districts. Um, significant portion going to the city and, and, and then the remainder going to the county and the voted piece. Here's what it looks like when you live outside a city, either East Helena or Helena. Um, sixty five percent of it is going to the school district and the state and twenty two percent is going to Helena operate or for the county operations and then thirteen percent is going for the voted piece. So here we're going to go over the the history of our millage and how it's increased year over year. And this is, this is from a, uh, dollar standpoint. So you're going to see um, an increase. So down at the bottom on this page, you can see we are going from thirty four point five million dollars within the incorporated cities, both cities this time, to thirty six million point seven. Um, that's, uh, last year we were receiving five point three three percent increase in revenue. This year it's an increase of six point four. Chair has mentioned that we have a high, high, um, inflationary year. This is two point eight percent. Next year, I'm estimating we're going to be much closer to two percent, maybe below, because we're, we're losing a three year average, which ends up smoothing out our, uh, revenue increases over time. So we've had the last three years, we've kind of had a higher inflationary a rate. And then I assume next year, well, I can already tell you next year is going to be a much lower revenue increase, uh, year over year. Um, also, we had a decent year in, in growth increase. So we had about five million dollars in um, added new value to the county's roles and that also helped bumped up that increase. So, but next year it will go down. I don't know about the growth piece, but I do know the inflationary piece will go down. Here's just, uh, the kind of showing in total for the county. When you include the outside incorporated cities, so we are now going from thirty seven point seven million dollars to forty point one million dollars for the fiscal year twenty five in millage revenue for the county, county as a whole, for all departments. And just quickly, just kind of the, oh, I can barely see that, um, the increases and decreases. So we usually talk about, just as an example, um, of newly taxable property revenue coming into the county for the countywide mill piece, just that mill, it's eight hundred and eight thousand dollars increase, the inflationary factor increases eight, eight hundred and eighty four thousand. Um, we had that three dollar increase in the valley irrigation district. Also, just, just to kind of focus on the county's budgets piece for their mills. So we, the county had an increase in mills of nineteen point five mills for, within the city of Helena.
Nine point one.
Oh, sorry, nine point one five mills. Thanks for the correction. And which is a ten dollars and I like, let's call it ten and a half dollars per a hundred thousand dollar home. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar home in this cities or a five hundred thousand dollar home in the city, which is better math, you're going to pay about fifty dollars more due to county operations. That's a increase due to county operations. If you're outside the city, um, and you're yeah, out of the unincorporated city, you're going to have a fourteen dollar point six or fourteen dollar sixteen cents increase, which is closer to seventy dollars for a hundred, five hundred thousand dollar home. So that, that's all, all due to county operations. I will, will know one last D, there was a decrease on the mill sheet, uh, to remove the Lincoln Hospital District, which had nine point four eight mills. Um, this removal was due to their loan being paid off actually this month. So that is a good result there. So if you have any more que- or any more questions, please feel free to ask. That is the conclusion of my presentation.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Rolfe.
On page, uh, uh, fourteen, um, it is, shows an indication of a percentage increase of five point one five. And how do we reconcile that with the, uh, with the two point eight, uh,
So
uh, allowed by the legislature.
The, it, it, there's two parts to that increase. Two point eight percent is due to the inflationary factor and then the remaining amount of the increase is due to the growth of the county. So that's newly taxable, uh, properties that are paying for that other increase. So the the typical household won't see a five percent increase. It's actually going to see a closer to a three percent increase because now we have new properties paying more into the revenue base.
So our, our, um, I guess I'm, I'm having a little trouble with that, that, uh, those numbers. Let's see. So that's the difference in, in taxable value because of new property of, of around five million dollars. Is that right?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Which so, me as a, as a current homeowner, my mind would be about two point eight percent.
Yeah.
That it increased. So when you talk about the five or six percent here, um, that remainder of that is the revenue that we took in via new, new growth, new construction, new, new things coming on to the rolls. But I didn't get an increase of five or six percent. I got an increase of two point eight percent.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, that's by state law, we're allowed to include all new growth into the county, uh, tax revenue.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what, that's what's making of the difference. Typically, uh, for county operations, uh, somebody that's been on the tax rolls before is only going to have about a two point eight percent increase.
Yeah.
Uh, another, another question, when when did or will the increased valuations that were, uh, done in the appraisal of uh, completed, I say, let's see, if I remember right, our, our last appraisals were based on uh, the end of two thousand and twenty one. And we've got another set will be based on the, the end of two thousand and twenty three, but they haven't been applied, right? Is that correct?
The, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, the the new appraisal values for twenty three have been applied for, they were applied for twenty four. And that's where the we saw a big increase in, uh, or a shift in tax base from because the homeowners really, they, they, they saw their appraisals go really, really high, really fast in twenty three. This fiscal year for twenty five, which is going off of appraisal values of twenty four. The, that, for fiscal or for tax year twenty four, there was no reappraisal done. And so typically what we see from the department revenue, that was just apply a two year incre- or a two percent increase on these off years. So we're going to see another reappraisal for twenty five, for the tax year twenty five. Which will then be applied to twenty six of next year. So depending on how the markets shift for homeowners, we'll, we'll, um, we'll see those reappraisals. Uh, but we'll, we'll get to see those reappraisals applied for the fiscal year twenty six. So tax year twenty five affects fiscal year twenty six. But yes, twenty three tax year had a reappraisal done. And that's what caused the, uh, the, the adjustment, the significant adjustment in the tax rates or the, the mill rates.
Thank you. And just, just to be clear for those who are watching or listening, um, the appraisals and the reappraisals that are coming, that's all done by the Department of Revenue. The county doesn't have any role in, in that. They tell us what uh, someone's property value is worth and all of that. We base our, our work on the numbers they give us.
Correct, Mr. Chair. The, the way we find out about the results of those, those re- reappraisals or appraisals uh, is through the certification. When we receive that on that first Monday of August, we get to see what, essentially what our county's worth from a, from a building perspective or a, uh, property perspective.
And I just wanted to clarify that because sometimes we get that question, why did you value my house at whatever, whatever? And it's, well, we had nothing to do with valuing your house. The appraisal is done by the state of Montana.
Yes, and when, when somebody has an issue with their appraisal, they can they can apply a, um, or they can um, challenge that appraisal.
Right.
And that appraisal, when it's being challenged, it comes, you submit it through us, but it goes right to the Department of Revenue. And they are the ones that determine the result of that.
Right. Just wanted to clarify. Any other questions right now, Commissioners? How about public comment on resolution twenty twenty four dash one hundred? It's just been described by Mr. Cornwell. Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, Commissioners, if there are no more questions, uh, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash one hundred?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and second, approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Any discussion?
I, I just really want to, um, thank, uh, Mr. Cornwell for the extra time that he gave me for the, all the questions I had during this process. Um, it's complex stuff and it's very different. I thought I understood it before I got here and I'm just now beginning to get to where I really understand it. And I, I just, I really appreciate the the work. And I, I would encourage people that have, uh, questions about their tax bills and about appraisals and about taxation to come in and talk with us. And well, uh, he, uh, Mr. Cornwell has a way of, uh, putting it into common English so we can understand it better. So I, I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I really do enjoy talking about this stuff. So if you want to come talk to me and get an earful, please come by.
That, that could be a problem, Mr. Cornwell.
It's a problem.
You really enjoy talking about this.
I'm, 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 I'm a hoot around, uh, the kitchen, the dining room table at night.
Miss your pain.
I bet you're a lot of fun. I still find this pretty confusing. So this appears to me to be the first step in, in what we're going to be looking at in our upcoming budget.
Yes, uh, we use this, this will, this fiscal year will be the base year for fiscal year twenty six. We, the results of this will be affecting next year's, um, adjustments. So next year, we're going to get a new, uh, growth factor and we're going to get a new.
Next year being fiscal year.
Sorry, uh, fiscal year twenty six. We're going to get.
What we're going into right now.
Yep. Oh, sorry, we're in fiscal year twenty five. Okay, I'll, let me back up. I think.
We're in twenty four, twenty five, we moved to twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah, it's kind of confusing.
Yeah, it is kind of confusing.
We're operating in fiscal year twenty five right now. And, and it does seem like we're a little behind because we're approving a budget that we're currently operating in. But, uh, or approving the mills that we're currently operating in. Yes. But it will be applied to the revenues that are collected in November and May of this fiscal year.
So this gives us an idea as to how much money we need to take in, in order to provide the services for our constituents.
Correct.
It's sort of, okay.
Yes.
Meet with the banker at the beginning of the hang, or the, yeah, the season. So you know, okay, I gotta have this much for fuel and this much for tires. I gotta replace three bowls. And so that's what, so we're coming in and saying this is what we need, folks. And then we figure out then when we, as we do the budget, that is the part where we figure out how much of it goes to which project.
Tire.
So when I have constituents come to me and they want to build they would, they want to fix the, uh, country club road. And then we look at this and say, but we don't have enough money for it. And so this is the basis for saying no, or by golly, it is there. Okay.
Correct. And right, this is, this is the basis for that, uh, discussion. Yep.
A very wise former, um, Commissioner told me when I was running for this job, he said, you gotta talk to people. They want you to spend more money on their road. You say, well, what is it you want to give up? So we have the money for this because we've got this amount of money. And where are you going to get, you gotta give up something. And it's not a concept that people are comfortable with. They don't want to hear that. They want their road fixed, no matter how much it costs. Okay, thank you.
And it is a great point you're making, Commissioner, that, um, county government, our government, or this, this county, we run on a balanced budget. We do not run in deficit. We do not have you know, a bunch of, uh, um, well, we don't, we don't run in deficit. So we don't, we can't exactly what you were just describing.
Borrow money to I'll gladly give, loan, uh, loan me money for a hamburger today and I'll pay you back on Tuesday. Sort of a, that's not the way this operation runs. You don't get the hamburger.
Right.
That we get the money. Okay.
There are certain things that we, um, borrow for in essence, but we essentially back that up with a, most often with a taxpayer vote. most often with a taxpayer vote. So again, I'll use the example of the detention center. We said, this is going to cost us, I can't remember the exact number. I'll use just for example, six million dollars. Taxpayers, do you want to back this loan essentially so we can renovate the detention center and, and you'll agree to pay it back over the next fifteen years? And we put that to them and they said, yes. And so we did the project and now we're paying that back over the next fifteen years. And that's part of the voted levies. And that, that's therefore the open lands levy that we um put to the voters a few years ago. That's now been expended for the most part, but we're still paying that back. Um, so there are a number of things that voted. And then we do have um some opportunity like within the RIDs to uh uh use intercap loans, state intercap loan program to borrow money to do projects, but those are also backed up by the citizens who have agreed to be part of an RID. And so they're kind of guaranteed loans versus working in deficit, which we don't do that. So we come to the, come each year with a balanced budget and uh we have X amount of dollars to work with and that's what we manage now. Sometimes we move things around or uh something happens within the year, like pandemic or something like that. So you do, you, you have to make adjustments, but for the most part, it is exactly as you described, Commissioner. So thanks for bringing that point to the
Well, more than, Mr. Chair, um, the, the other thing that this county has done a really good job for well over a decade is trying to make sure that their capital improvement plans are as funded as they can. Now, it is difficult to fill these buckets. These are big, big buckets, especially when you look at public works and the roads that they want to repair um and the bridges that they want to repair. These are, these are big, big holes to, to fill, but they have done a really good job every year to try to uh manage their budgets effectively so that they can contribute to those capital improvement plans. And that's really how it's done. If these departments are able to beat their budgets and they have a capital improvement plan that you agree on, then they're able to contribute to those plans and to be able to save money going forward because those plans, they, they're fully invested, they earn interest, and also we don't have to incur debt. Now, is it likely that we're going to be able to use these capital improvement plans to do a new detention center or uh an arc or the building on the film where the fairgrounds is? No, with the, the, that's going to have to go out to the, to the citizens and, and be voted on. But we're going to try our best in the meantime to, to do what we can to mitigate having to take on any additional debt internally to, to be able to get these big, large projects done as efficiently and effectively as we can, especially from a money standpoint.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners, before we vote? We have a motion second on the table, please.
It, it is, this is there, there is so much information. I'm, I'm glad I've got the experience of these two gentlemen on the other side. I'm sure they're much more dollar knowledgeable than I am, but um, when you lay it out like that, it makes sense. This is, this is how we run our home budgets, only on a much smaller basis. We put money aside. So when something, you know, the Chevy, the motor blows up, we gotta replace it, you better have something put away. And that's a personal thing. The county is much larger. So, thank you.
Thanks, anything else? Okay, we do have a motion second on the table to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash one hundred. Commissioners, without any further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I should have said this prior to letting you run away, Frank, but I just want you to underst- you don't have to come up, but uh, this is a ton of work and it's complicated and uh, Commissioner, I, I'm with you in terms of uh my limited understanding. I get the big picture and I understand a lot just by picking it up over the years, but I don't really want to know as much as you know, and I'm really glad we have you and the rest of the folks that are working on this. Thank you to the finance staff. Thank you to all the finance uh leads in each one of the departments and offices that, that contribute to this and all of our department and office heads that uh bring balanced budgets forward and help us to really be as efficient and and responsible with the public dollar that we can be. So thank you very much for all of that. All right, commissioners, we're going to move on to uh the preliminary plat application, but I think we should take a five minute break. And allow, yes, we did vote. Yeah, we voted. Uh, we allow people to use the restroom and, and refresh your coffee or water or whatever. I know that our, our guests are probably, if their tails are like mine, they probably need a stretch. So let's take five minutes and we'll return. Pre-convene, welcome back, everyone. Uh, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the preliminary plat application for Bitterroot Estates subdivision. This was tabled from eight twenty two. Wait, yeah, eight twenty two, that's right. Uh, I'll turn it over to you, Rachel, for introduction here and overview.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, Rachel Ward, planner with Community Development and Planning. Before you was a request for a four lot first minor subdivision called Bitterroot Estates subdivision. It's located just south of Carmen Road along Rosette Lane. The property owners and applicant uh are Raymond and Donna Jean LaFramboise. Uh, and their technical representative is Kasni and Associates. Um, and as you mentioned, uh, this preliminary plat application um was heard in, in uh more detail on August twenty second. It was sub- subsequently tabled to give you time to contemplate the proposal and all comments that had been received um by that time. Just to give a quick overview, as I mentioned at the last um meeting, this is a first minor subdivision. Um, there we go, that would divide the eleven point four seven acre parcel into four lots. Each one would be used for single family dwelling. Uh, the lots will be between two point five one and three point five five acres in size. All lots are going to be served by individual wells, individual onsite wastewater treatment systems and utilities. Direct access to the lots is proposed via an internal access road, which is going to be an extension of Rosette Lane. The applicant proposes to utilize the existing fire hydrants located in the grassland subdivision to meet the fire protection requirements. And they're also requesting a variance um from the subdivision regulations, chapter eleven H sixteen, which requires the roads to be constructed within road easements, which are extended for future road connections. And lastly, I want to say because this is a first minor subdivision, there are no requirements for parkland dedication. This is a vicinity map. You can see the, the subject property highlighted in red. This also shows you um, uh, the grasslands development just to the north, as well as some of the lower density um uh agricultural residential um development in the surrounding area. This is the preliminary plat uh of Bitterroot Estates. Uh, and while I have this up here, I just want to point out a, a few key elements that are visually represented on the preliminary plat. So first and foremost, um, is a ninety foot uh wide Bureau of Reclamation underground drain easement and bisects the property. You'll also notice a twenty foot private irrigation and utility easement, uh, which will be located immediately south of the subject property. And then also you'll notice the, that thirty feet of the sixty foot county road easement uh is located on an adjacent lot, not within the subdivision. Um, I discussed all these um items in more detail at the last meeting. I'm happy to answer questions about these either now or when we get into the findings of fact. And I think the one last thing I just wanted to point out, as I mentioned, they are requesting a variance. Um, what that would mean is that you can see the two uh county road easement that extend to the east and to the west. There you go. But they're um requesting to construct only um a hammerhead turnaround at the terminus of Rosette Lane. So that's just a visual representation of that. So as I mentioned, uh, at the last meeting, as part of the review process, we do send out a summary of the proposal and the preliminary plat to various public agencies uh that are noted in the staff report. We did receive an additional comment um on August twenty third from Northwest Energy, and I do have a handout of this that I'll provide.
June. Thank you.
This comment was submitted um to the applicant and their technical representative on September third. Essentially to summarize this comment, Northwestern Energy is requesting that there be at least ten feet of space, physical space, I should say, outside of the road and drainage ditch um within an appropriate easement for them to place their utilities. Uh, I will say while we did receive this comment after August uh twenty second, um, these comments were contemplated at the time the staff report was written. Um, and more specifically, you'll notice in condition number four and condition number nine, um, that's where the uh contemplation of placement of utilities um and their uh corresponding plan with, with road plans is contemplated. That's condition number four, which I know we will discuss. Um, uh, as well as condition number nine, which essentially allows um and requires uh the developer um to put any required easements on the face of the final plat for utilities. Finally, I will say, um, we've received no public comment regarding the proposal to date. So that concludes my brief overview of the proposal and update since the last meeting. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the um proposal. I'm happy to pause here and answer any questions that you have um now, or we can get into the next few slides regarding the subdivision decision process.
Well, let's do both.
Okay.
That, any questions right now? So I just want to reiterate, you just said it, but uh no public comment. So there was no um public neighbor opposition. We didn't have
Outcry.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. We sent out adjacent landowner notifications to adjacent properties. There was a sign that was posted on the property as well um facing the development um to the north. Uh, so people should have had an opportunity to, to know about this project. Um, we've received no comments to date.
Thank you. Just wanted to reiterate that. Sorry, Commissioner, did
Uh, you covered it.
Okay, good, good. Other questions at, at this time? Okay, so uh, did you, yeah, I, I, did you have something to add? I'm sorry, I, I will give opportunity for the applicant as well as the public. And it's just a second. I just want to make sure if there's any questions for staff. Any other, any other questions at this time? We can jump in with questions at any time, but thank you for the reminder, Mr. McNally. Um, did you? Any, okay. Because the applicant liked to address the commission and add any comment or uh commentary that you'd like, if you're interested. You know, you'd have to come to the microphone. We're recording the whole things. We'd, we need your name and stuff for the record, your stats for the record here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Commissioners, uh Ray LaFramboise, thirty seven, thirty one Juniper Drive, and this is my wife, Donna Jean.
Welcome.
Thank you. I think we've been, uh, I think we've covered all our bases through Rachel here and it's been kind of a long process and uh, that's about all I got to say. Working with Rachel and, and Kasni has been an experience.
I don't think I have anything further either.
Okay, well, thank you. Just wanted to give you the opportunity. So
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you being here today. And how about public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment before we move forward? There's no public in the room. And again, we received no public comment between the last meeting and this, correct?
Correct.
Other than uh Northwestern Energy, which we're going to address here, and you've already, you've already addressed it to uh some degree, but um, I might say that uh this essentially the same request and expectation uh is there for uh every subdivision that we put forward. They, they want to be part of the mix and their consideration for utilities and all of that.
Mr. Chip, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, commissioners, the way we're going to do this as we move forward is is we'd like to have a, an overall motion to uh consider the subdivision application as a whole. But prior to making a decision on that, we will take up the variance requests, we'll take up the findings of fact and uh conclusions and the conditions. Okay, prior, and then we'll, then we'll act on the overall motion, please.
Okay, so first of all, under this step one, we're going to look at this application and how it's been addressed. And after we talk about it, then we'll come back and vote on this initial motion. Is that correct?
So yes.
Okay.
But it will make a global motion. Within that motion, we'll uh make several decisions likely, a decision about the variance, a decision about the facts and findings and uh a decision about the conclusions and the and the conditions. And after we make, make decisions on those, then we'll take up that, that original motion, the global motion, and uh we'll incorporate all that into the final decision.
Okay. And why do we have to do this? I mean, these people, it's their private property. They should be able to divide it up and do what they want. Why can't we just let it go?
Well
The law.
From a, yes, simple version of this is that, that we have a subdivision plating act in Montana that we have to follow and that has most all of these requirements in there. Uh, part of what we have to do is have subdivision regulations. It is zoned. Uh, so we have to consider all those pieces and parts to it. And then one of the most significant things is if we do a good job today and we make this decision one way or the other, uh, based on good findings and facts and and a good record as well as good conditions, then our uh applicants likely that that decision will be durable. So if there's ever a issue with what what uh has been proposed here from a neighbor or from somebody else, whatever it might be, that we want to make sure our decision is durable. So it, it's cumbersome. It's full of uh ins and outs and all overs and it, it causes uh folks to, to wait a while and go through a lot of hoops and we have to go through a lot of hoops, but in the end, hopefully we're making a decision that is based on um, good information, good facts, and then also uh we have the best chance of being durable for the long run and that decision not being challenged or or in some way affected negatively. So
Thank you, Chairman.
Answer your question?
Well, and not only mine, but when, as I say, people, I run into them in the grocery store and they say, why in the heck can't we do what we want with our own private property? And I say, well, our legislature has decided there are laws and this is one of them that we must comply with. And that's what you just said.
I think so. Anything else you'd like to add to that? Anybody?
You summed it up beautifully, Montana subdivision and plating in the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, many more nuances to it, but um that's the, kind of the highlights, I think. So anyway, on we go. So commissioners, I would entertain a motion to uh approve the preliminary plat application Bitterroot Estates subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the subdivision.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me, um
The preliminary plat, excuse me.
Absolutely. I just wanted um, mention, are we conditionally
Conditionally approving, yes. Thank you very much. We need to make sure we get that in there. So uh conditionally approving the preliminary plat application of the Bitterroot Estates subdivision. There we go. So that with the motion, you're good adding that in?
I seconded it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification and correction. We have to make sure we're precise as we can be. Now, commissioners, before acting upon that motion, uh, like to address the variance request. So we have a variance request from section eleven H sixteen of the uh subdivision regulations. Do you want to
Yeah, absolutely.
Give us the highlights?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, um, so with regard to the findings of fact, you'll see on page fifty one of fifty two of your staff report. Um, there are six findings of fact. there are six findings of fact, and I'll just go over those. Finding a fact number one, section 11 H16 states that when county road easements are extended to exterior property boundaries within the subdivision for future road connection, as provided in section 11 H4, the road shall be constructed in accordance with the county road standards in the Lewis and Clark County Public Works Manual. The applicant is proposing to extend 60-foot county road and utility easements to both the east and to the west property boundaries for future road connections. The properties to the west of the subdivision are developed with residential and agricultural structures, including, including a horse corral immediately adjacent to the extended road and utility easement. The eastern county road and utility easement terminates at the eastern property line, which abuts a 40-foot by 243-foot flag that's attached to a family transfer parcel that does not include a public access easement to accommodate future expansion of the road, unless it's dedicated at a time in the future. The proposed hammerhead turnaround at the terminus of Rosette Lane would allow for future road expansion to the south. And then lastly, we received a comment from the Lewis and Clark County Public Works Department indicating, quote, "We believe the easement for the east leg should be extended to the eastern boundary of tract A1B1-A to provide connection to the lot to the east if the primary access easement of Rosette Lane is also encumbering adjacent land. If that easement is not extended, the adjacent tract one may be cut off from access in the event of future development. Additionally, when developers do not construct roads as required, historically, they do not get built at the later date." So those are the findings of fact included in the staff report. I guess just to address this last comment or the comment that we received from the Public Works Department, the 40-foot wide flag portion of this family transfer parcel is not incorporated in this subdivision. And so our ability to require them to put a road easement for future expansion did not seem appropriate at the time the staff report was written.
Could you pull up the map for us, please? Yes, perfect, thank you.
What is a flag?
A flag, yes. So you can see here, so this is, they're requesting the hammerhead turnaround. There are county road easements that are going to the east and to the west. This, it kind of looks like a flagpole, is 40 feet wide and is not included in the subdivision. And so Public Works request that this county road and utility easement be extended to the far edge of that flagpole was something that internally within our department did not seem appropriate at this time. That doesn't mean that down the road, neighbors can't negotiate for that. But at this point, conditioning this subdivision on that is not something that was included in the staff report.
So on the flagpole piece is part of the property above it there, you should kind of show that. So that's.
Mr. Chair, that's correct, yes.
And that's not part of the subdivision.
Is that like a backdoor entry to the lot there that's existing?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, I don't know that it's a backdoor per se. I know that this lot was developed through the family transfer exemption in 2022. Their son is developing the, the lot. I believe he has an approach off of this extension of Rosette Lane.
So.
I might ask, might ask a question. It seems to me like there have been requests for extra ways to get in and out of a, out of a subdivision. This is kind of a dead end street. And that extra piece that comes down from the portion that's not in the subdivision seems to add to the difficulty of, of creating another way in and out of the sub, out of the subdivision in an emergency. How, how does that, how, how does that factor in?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, our subdivision regulations require that for minor subdivisions, you can, you, you are not required to have two men, means of ingress and egress. In terms of public safety fire codes, the hammerhead turnaround does allow for fire trucks to navigate this area, a three-point turn to, to get in and go out. I, I think it was finding a fact, number five does note that this hammerhead turnaround and the extension of Rosette Lane goes to the far southern property line, which would allow for that road to be extended even farther south and in a more appropriate location, be extended to the east and to the west.
In, in, in the future, if property, say to the east of that were to be subdivided, there, there would be an extra encumbrance there or, or an extra step or two to get that, that taken care of, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, if, say, a property owner to the east wants to develop that lot, they would have to work with the Public Works Department to extend the road to the far east. They would also have to negotiate with the property owner to get that additional 40-foot of easement for road expansion. It's possible, but it would be extra step.
But, but because it's a minor subdivision with limited numbers of, of, of lots and that it's exempted from that extra access point that we had. It's just an extra step that might have to be taken in the future to, to do anything.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, yes. So the, the minor subdivision is not required to have two means of ingress and egress, but that doesn't mean that when a subdivision comes through, that we're not looking to allow for future road connections. And so that's what this section of the subdivision regulations talks about, is that when we see these extension of county road easements, and it, it says explicitly, for future road connection, we want to see those roads built. In this instance, they're, they're providing that county road and utility easement to the far property lines, but they're just requesting that variance to paving it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add more clarification to that, that this request, variance request is not related as much to, to ingress egress. It's related to if it followed the subdivision regulations as written, they would have to build those roads east and west to their property boundary for future, potential future growth or subdivision. What they're asking for is not to have to build them, put the easements in place so that they're there for future growth potential, but not have to build them with this project. That's essentially what they're asking for, Commissioners. So just to build the hammerhead instead, but to include the easements to the east and west for future growth.
Correct.
So does everybody understand what, what is being asked? Okay. Go ahead and finish your presentation here for this part.
Yeah, for sure. So those were the findings of fact as they relate to the variance.
Okay, well, we want to talk about these a little bit more, Commissioners, and the conclusions at the top and or I'll call, I'll call them criteria. All four of this, these, this criteria must be met to grant a variance. So we need to go through those and, and relate them to our findings if we can and should. So I'm just going to read those and talk about them a little bit. Granted, the variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and our general welfare or injurious to other adjoining properties. So that, that has to be met because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved. An undue hardship to the owner will result if these regulations were enforced. And the third one is the granting of the variance will not cause substantial increase to public costs. And the approval of the variance will not place the subdivision in nonconformance with the adopted regulations. So Commissioners, we must meet all those and tie things back. So please, Commissioner.
Okay, I so if we do not grant the variance, then the downside will be that the developer must build the road from the edge of the hammerhead, as shown on your diagram, all the way to the dead end where it runs into the property, which is the the already established lot that was done with the transfer, family transfer. And we don't, we can't do anything about that. I don't know, it looks like a 10-foot wide.
Forty.
What?
Forty feet.
We, there's nothing we can do about it. But if we say no by gully, you don't get a variance, then the developers will need to build the road all the way to the edge of the other guy's property on both ends. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, yes, if the variance is not granted, they will have to construct the roads to the, the edges of the property. I will say that you can condition this variance. You can grant the variance in, in part. And so you can say, you know, hey, we think it's reasonable that, for example, the road does not need to be extended westward, but it needs to be extended eastward or vice versa. You can condition this variance in that regard. Or you can say, you know, we will grant the variance in whole and the hammerhead turnaround is sufficient.
Okay, and I'm looking at the conclusions of, of law that are in the first section on this. So if we grant the variance, it will not cause a substantial increase in public costs. Is that correct?
Well, we need to make that conclusion.
Okay, is that, well, that's, I guess where I'm trying to get. So maybe I should start with the first one.
But yeah, no, well, we can talk about that one first if you'd like. But I, I would agree with you, Commissioner, that, that is likely, it will not cause substantial increase in public costs because we're asking the developer to dedicate that right of way. If it is not built and there is future growth to the east, likely in order for that developer to complete their subdivision, if they need that access, they would have to complete that road. What we've, what we've kind of stumbled upon in the past and why this rate, one of the reasons why this regulation exists is because we didn't feel it was right to put that on the, the next guy, if you will, to have to finish the road. If someone is building a subdivision and they can finish the road to the edge of their property, then it, it is set up for future growth. But if not built, and in this case, if we were granted the, the variance, at least the right of way or the, the easement would be there for that future growth. And in this case, as has been pointed out, there's a 40-foot stretch before you get to the next large lot that could be developed. And so I don't think that the public would be on the hook for, I mean, it looks like to me that it would be whomever is choosing to develop the property. So I don't see that as a as I see that criteria being met via that discussion.
Okay. So, and again, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the first conclusion that this will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare. If there is a a grass fire across between lot two and, and, and the individual parcel there on Rosette Lane, then the people in lot three and four, would they be in danger of not being able to get out of there to avoid being burned up?
Well, Commissioner, from my perspective, the, even if those roads were built to the east and west, they just dead end. There's no way out. So it's just like a, a larger hammerhead, if you will. I mean, you could look at it that way. They, they don't have, so the reason for the, the regulation is for future development, future growth. So it isn't for two ingress egress necessarily in this, in a minor subdivision.
No, but it's detrimental to public health or safety if people are trapped in there. No, they're not.
But I think what, the way I, way I think about that is public health and safety, can they, can people get to them? Can, can a fire truck turn around? Can a, you know, police car get there and turn around? And if the extension of those roads are not going to, going to provide any further public safety because they dead end, then the hammerhead seems to meet the same, the same level of protection as those roads dead ending at the property lines. From, from my, I don't know if that makes.
Well, I'm glad we had this discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else in regard to that?
No, I, I think you've addressed that.
Mr. Chair, if I can jump in, before you get to conclusion number two, I do have, I can pull up the map here to show you what the surrounding looks. Got some great aerial imagery. This is the subject property here. This is Rosette Lane. And again, I'm happy to navigate if you want to look at the surrounding area, but it does show development in the area.
Right, and in terms of number two, which is because of the particular physical surrounding shape, topography, topographical conditions of the specific property involved, an undue hardship to the owner will result in these regulations, will result if these regulations are enforced. And I was just looking to the west, if that was built to the west, it, that road ends up being right behind a house. Looks like.
We can zoom in here a little bit more.
Oh, it's a corral, I thought that was a house. Yeah, so it's, but it's a property that's being, it's already.
Structures.
Structures and used, but not that it couldn't change in the future, but the road would end right there at that property line. And it seems like there's no, no logical outlet for it at this time. Those properties are already, they have structures and are being, being used. That's a lot that's already encumbered by a home and uses. Where the other side is could be the argument for probable future development is there. But there is the 40-foot gap there that would have to be negotiated with that landowner and in order to get to the other side. Not sure if there's other access up there as well, but.
Are these, excuse me if I might, Mr. Chair, the, down in the bottom right corner of that picture, there's two dark areas. Are those like settling ponds for a, or a treatment, water treatment area?
Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, I believe they are the Treasure State Acres Lagoons.
And how do they access that property? Are those, they have to come all the way around to the Juniper stable and then, and that way?
Mr. Chair, I believe that's correct. You can kind of see a driveway that extends. And again, this is not on the subject property, this is a ways south.
And then a question, another follow-up question, if the, the road coming down from the subdivision on the, on the north down to, right there. But that, that. But that, that road access is the only, they're, they're, these new uh, lots are not set up to be hooked up with that with that water system or water treatment system. Is that right?
Um, Mr. Chair Commissioner Rolf, that's correct. So, um, the grasslands estate is served by a community water and wastewater system, uh, public system. In the review process, uh, the applicant was uh, requested to reach out to that system to determine if there was capacity, um, because they were within five hundred feet of a component of that system. Um, a, a letter was submitted with the application indicating that they did not have capacity to serve these four lots of the subdivision, which is why they are um, using onsite wells and onsite wastewater treatment systems.
So then probably the likelihood of there being a need to get down to those settling ponds to have anything to do with those new lots we're creating is, is pretty small.
Eh, that's correct. Um, and I believe, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's Treasure State Acres um, Lagoons, and that is a development on the other side of
Yeah.
uh, the highway.
Yep, okay. Yeah, the grassland ones are to the north there.
Precisely.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So I wanted to um, talk about this one in relation to um, finding of fact number six, which is the comments by the Public Works Department, and they they are um, recommending or believe that the easement to the e, the east west should be extended to the boundary of the east for sure to the boundary, which is being proposed, that easement is being proposed. Um, the one question mark that they end with there is um, that when developers do not construct roads as re, as required historically, they do not get built at a later date. And I think that may be true, but the question mark is whether this road needs to be built and which, whether it would need to be built in a, at a later date or not. Depending on if that property gets developed or not, it's uh, but the easement would be there uh, to provide for that future growth if needed. So I get the point they're making. I also see that as, you know, potential hardship for the developer to build something that is not going to be used or not going to be accessed and doesn't provide any service to the people that are in that subdivision necessarily, because there's no outlet there. So, something that crossed my mind, Commissioners, are there other things you want to talk about in relation to this? So let's look at the criteria again. Um, I, I think we discussed the first criteria or conclusion there that the variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety or general welfare or injurious to the adjoining properties. Don't see it affecting them necessarily. Anything you'd like to add there Commissioners?
I think we've addressed it sufficiently, Chairman.
Yeah, the undue hardship, I think we've talked about that. Substantial cost to the, to the public.
It would, it would seem to me that if you had to build a road that was never going to be used, that was a, that's a waste of resources and undue hardship.
I, I could come to that conclusion. And the last one is af, uh, approval of the variance will not place the subdivision in, in nonconformance with adopted regulations. Can you just help us go over that one a little bit?
Sure.
What do we mean by that?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, um, granting this variance, um, it will not uh, uh, impact any other section of the regulations. Um, so in this instance, uh, the applicant is still meeting the other subdivision um, regulation that talks about extending road easements um, for future road connections. They're simply requesting the variance to section eleven H sixteen um, for the purpose of, of simply not paving it. Um, all other regulations, um, when it comes to the proposal, uh, have been met. Besides this section that they're requesting the variance to.
Okay.
Excuse me, just
Please.
one clarification. Did you say they're not, this isn't a paved road, is it?
Um, m, Mr. Chair Commissioner Payne, thank you for, yes, that clarification. These roads within the subdivision are going to be gravel roads.
Exactly.
Thank you, yes.
Good catch. Anything else? Please, Mr. McNally.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, just to add, in addition with this conclusion, will not place the, the subdivision in nonconformance with adopted regulations, but we also look at, um, will not place the subdivision in nonconformance with, not only just the subdivision regulations, but our zoning regulations and, and other documents that we have uh, on file that guide us in our decision making.
Right, and it's a good point because we pass, if we uh, approve a variance that just puts them in violation of some other rule or regulation, then that just sets us all up for more trouble. So we want to make sure that that's one of the criteria that we've met, and it looks to be the case. Excellent, okay. So Commissioners, anything you'd like to add or address further in terms of the findings of fact related to this variance request? Would there be a motion to approve the findings of facts related to the variance request?
Do we need to a motion to, I think we need a motion to adopt findings of fact?
Yes, I just asked.
Okay, no, you said you didn't use adopt, you used the wrong word and you know how I am.
Adopt.
Adopt. Motion to adopt the findings of fact as recommended by the staff. I move.
Second.
Moved in second to adopt the findings of fact.
There is, there is one question that comes to my mind, and that's item number six there. Have we thoroughly talked that through?
Well, let's talk about it further, Commissioner. I, I thought we did. I mean, the first part of, of the Public Works recommendation is that the easement to the east be extended to the boundary, which is part, it's going to happen. The other part is they're worried that, um, you know, if it's not built now, that it may never get built. And that's a judgment statement, that's a opinion, um, it's based on some of the times it's seen in the past, and it, you know, to be, to be honest, it is one of the reasons why we have adopted the regulation in the first place is because if we don't get some of these roads built, they may never get built. But in this case, in this case, with a four lot subdivision and the uh, you know, the flag there, um, it might be something that we could consider and what we are considering. The other thing we could do is add a condition to these to this variance request and say actually, the leg to the east, we want built to the property line. Leg to the west, just an easement is adequate. And we'd have to, we'd have to discuss that and determine that that's something we want to do and make sure we have facts related to that. But this is one of those facts that could be could address that. So are, do you have interest in?
I just, I just think it's something we need to talk about, whether it was a, you know, eh, it, it seems as though that that's, that would be the logical place where, where there might be an ex, a need for that extension, but you know, somebody'd have to be divi, subdividing or using the property differently or beyond that to, for that to happen. I think it's worth at least talking about.
Yeah, and it is true then.
To the east would be.
Yeah.
Should be on there.
It is true that in, with other subdivisions that we've done in the past, the extensions to the edge of the property, we've required them to build them because that's part of our regulations. And especially when there's a large open field there, like there is in this case, there's the forty foot stretch, but then there's beyond that, there is open land that potentially could be developed. So it would provide potential future access to that property for a developer in the future or a landowner in the future. So that's something we really need to contemplate here for sure. Before we make this decision.
Um, could we ask the developer? Uh, uh, they, they did a land transfer to a, uh, their son. Why did they leave the flag thing there? Because it clearly stops that use of that road, and maybe there is something, some reason we haven't thought of. Could, could we ask Ray to come up and explain this to us?
He's willing. If you'd introduce yourself again when you get to the microphone, please.
Ray LaFronboise, my wife Donna Jean, thirty-seven, thirty-one, Juniper Drive. Uh, Commissioners, uh, the reason that forty foot easement was put in there.
Could you put the map up again for us, or for me? Sorry, not that one, the other one.
Uh, there is a irrigation easement running down the east and west property line to the fence, and there's also utility easement that runs through there. And my son, who owns the five acres for the family transfer, plans on irrigating his five acres. And so that's why that was put in there, so he could run an irrigation ditch across that with the power to put his pump in for irrigation.
I suspected there was more to this than we understood, that's.
It doesn't necessarily preclude that there couldn't be a, a road, a street across there someday, uh, with the proper crossings and all of that.
Yeah, with, you know, like you say, you'd have to get uh, his, his permission, I guess, but you know, the easement is run right up to there, to the east and the west. And my only consideration was if I had to pay to have that road put into county specs, it would, wouldn't be feasible for me to even do the subdivision with the cost of the road. So that's why the, uh, Kazni suggested they put in a, a hammerhead, and the easements will still be there. It's just that the hammerhead would be put in, and those easements would be for fu, future use.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Missures.
Please.
Uh, and the road will be paved, it'll, it'll be pavement instead of gravel.
Right, I mean, right away, right as you're developing it?
Well.
Twenty years from now?
No, it'll be paved soon, soon as we get approval for development.
Okay.
Yeah, the county said either gravel road or pavement, and means we built it to the county specs. They said we could either leave it gravel or pave it, and my idea was to pave the whole thing, hammerhead and all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McNally.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I appreciate that information from Mr. LaFronboise about, uh, his intention to do above and beyond what our subdivision regulations would require. I'll note, however, that our conditions that we're recommending for you for your consideration will include just a gravel standard, that is our regulation. If the applicant wishes to again exceed that gravel standard with the pavement standard, uh, we would encourage him to work with our Public Works Department to develop those plans, just like he would if he was to gravel the road. Uh, so we would anticipate that, um, uh, we, our conditions will remain the same just to, to gravel, that's the, that's the requirement we have in our subdivision regulations, but again, if they wish to exceed those requirements, they're free to do that, and we will, we will, uh, review those plans as necessary.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, further discussion. Commissioner Rolf, you were talking about, um, finding number six. Are, what is your comfort level in, in accepting, adopting that finding, or is there something you'd like to change? Or is there a condition you'd like to add to the or cons, for consideration?
So the, the Public Works Department suggested that in their comment, they said, we believe the easement for the east leg should be extended to the eastern boundary of tract A one B one A, which is that now.
Oh, yeah, right. They, they suggest that, that it go across the forty foot section as well, but we can't, we can't, it's not.
And that's, that, that's not.
No one else's private property.
Up to this decision, okay.
Right. It's just their suggestion, that's what they'd like to see, but it's, uh, if it's not possible, it's not possible. And then the other comment was that, uh, when roads are not constructed as required, they often don't get built. Um, but.
Which is track, track one?
You're talking the A one B one dash A, is that what you're talking about?
Well, that's the last part of that, that uh, suggestion by the Public Works Department says the adjacent track one.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, if I could, I believe tract one is the property to the east of that family transfer parcel and that flagpole lot.
Over here.
Yes.
Over here to the right.
That is tract one.
Okay, got it. Okay, here, okay.
I'm comfortable.
Anything else you'd like to add or discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, no.
Okay. So we have a motion to second on the floor to adopt the six findings of fact that are before us, uh, without any, uh, amendments. Commissioners, anything further you'd like to add? Okay, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, now, how about the conclusions slash criteria, one through four? Do we believe they've been met Commissioners? Those four criteria, if they, if we do, then, uh, in, in our discussion, I think we've covered those. If so, um, we need a motion to
Adopt.
Adopt the conclusions, yes. And we can read through them again if we need to, we've read them several times, so the four conclusions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the conclusions as recommended by the staff. That the applicant has demonstrated that the requested variance meets the criteria in section two B one of Lewis and Clark County subdivision regulations.
Second, moved in second to adopt the conclusions. Further discussion Commissioners? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Now we would need a motion to, based on the adoption of the conclusions and the findings, uh, approval of variant, the variance request to section eleven H one six.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the variance. As discussed, anything further Commissioners?
No.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you very much. All right, now that the variance has been approved, we're going to take up the overall findings of fact in your packet Commissioners. You'll find the findings that, uh, have been brought forth by the staff and course there are, how many categories? Eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven categories that we're going to talk about?
Mr. Chair, that seems correct, yes.
And that first category of findings is, uh, the category, uh, impacts on agriculture. So let's do a criteria for review, that, just that section, maybe, just so it gives us an overview for, for, for folks on page four right there. We, would you read that for us, just so we have that in the record?
Absolutely. So with regard to the findings of fact, impacts on agriculture, uh, the subject property consists of eleven point four seven acres of relatively flat and formerly irrigated agricultural land. The NRCS designates the soil within the boundary of the subdivision as prime farmland if irrigated. Uh, after a five acre family transfer parcel was created from the parent tract in twenty twenty-two, the subject. Uh, after a five acre family transfer parcel was created from the parent tract in two thousand and twenty-two, the subject property was no longer irrigated. Uh, the conditions of approval for the subdivision will require a five year weed management plan to be completed to mitigate noxious weeds. A Montana pollutant discharge elimination system permit for stormwater and erosion control and restrictive covenants providing notice about agricultural operations in the area that the property should be maintained in a weed free manner and the use of the best management practices for erosion control during construction. And finally restraining domestic pets on the property.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I wasn't there. I was thinking about the criteria for review, just the why we're doing this. I was gonna, but that's okay. We're fine. I think we talked about the eleven. We're going to talk about each one of them individually. So there's eleven areas that have to undergo review for impacts. And agriculture is the first one. So we're talking about that. So Commissioners, let's talk about these findings related to agriculture. Um, impacts on agriculture. Um, as you said, this land was being used for agricultural use. This would take it out of agricultural use. But one of the main things that we want to build facts around or understand is how this new use might impact the agricultural activities around it as well, right?
Mr. Chair, that's correct, yes.
Okay. And I think that's what you're talking about here with the the different pieces that you brought up. And one of those I just wanted to bring up. And I think we're going to talk about it multiple times, but there is a, there's a uh, ditch at the south end that's related to agriculture. How is this going to impact that? There's, there's kind of, there's been some contemplation about how to deal with that and how to make sure that it has the least amount of impact. We need to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I'm happy to go through, um, as you mentioned, there are eleven criteria.
Yeah.
Um, the first one is agriculture. The second one is agricultural water user facilities. So if, if that's a more appropriate time to talk about that ditch, I mean, they do obviously interplay agricultural water user facilities, but.
We can talk about them, but noxious weeds and other things. So changing the use from agriculture to residential, potential for weeds, weeds to get on next door properties, all of that. I mean, that's part of what bringing up. And so that's why we would address that or, or talk about that. And then, um, there has to be a, or a condition related to addressing that, those issues. And that's the weed management plan. Stormwater was another issue, you know, I was looking at and we're going to talk about this later too, but the groundwater is as little as five feet down. So building a stormwater retention is something that if you go too deep, you're going to be just in the groundwater. So that has to be in, and I think talking about how to mitigate that and the findings around that, you, you talked about that proposal is to have actual stormwater retention on each lot. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Relatively shallow.
DEQ, um, lot layout that was included, uh, illustrates individual stormwater ponds on each of the lots. Um, DEQ, when they review this lot layout, will, will hopefully take into consideration that this area does have high groundwater. But I don't expect, just given, um, the individual stormwater ponds, that they're going to be excessively deep or, or large in any mean.
And that retention is important so it doesn't affect the agricultural activities around it as well.
For sure.
Right. Okay. Commissioner?
Yes, um, I sit on the county weed board, so of course I pay attention to the five year weed management plan. One of the things I've learned while attending those meetings is that there are flowers that we buy and we put them into our landscaping and they're not native to Montana. And they get out of control and they become um, noxious weed for the rest of us to deal with and may take twenty years, but it's, it's certainly would have an impact on agriculture if the weeds. So it's a five year weed management plan. And how do they go about enforcing that people have to um, not plant things in their yards that are going to, you know, become, uh, oh, isn't that a pretty plant? And then it turns out it's spotted knappweed or something. So who has the teeth to enforce the five year weed management plan?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, um, we do have, uh, within Public Works, I believe, um, Christian Leonard is the, the weed, um, management, uh, I don't know his exact title, um, but, but there, he does have, um, resources. Um, and he does work with property owners when that five year weed management plan is submitted. Um, and everyone across the state is required to manage noxious weeds in accordance with state statute.
Is, is this property currently under a weed management plan? Do you know?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, they will be required as a condition of the subdivision to obtain a weed management plan prior to any disturbance on the property.
That's a great idea. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Well, change in use is always an issue, so not a bad issue necessarily, but things have to be considered. And so some of the things that are talked about here in, um, the findings related to the impacts of residential uses on an agricultural area. We just talked about the stormwater and weeds. But often what happens, and you've seen this happen where residential properties go in next to farmland and all of a sudden, wow, those horses and cows really stink or, uh, you know, my dog, uh, I'm in trouble for my dog chasing their cows or those kinds of things. So there are some things that have to be contemplated and, and, um, that's where there are restrictive covenants that come into play. And, um, can you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely, um, Mr. Chair. So I, condition number ten, um, does include a number of, there are essentially notices that, um, uh, are made to property owners. Um, uh, some of these will include, um, the uh, need to manage their property in a weed free manner, um, best practices for erosion control. And then also making sure that they know that they do need to restrain their, um, pets on the property. So it's not to be a nuisance to adjacent agricultural, uh, practices.
Right. Thank you. Anything else Commissioners around agriculture? Impacts on agriculture, there are impacts and part of those conclusions here at the end, talk about, um, the adverse impacts to agriculture, the impacts of agriculture as set forth in the findings of fact will be mitigated by the imposed conditions of approval based upon the record when satisfied and completed. So that, that's what we're building now. So some of those conditions that address some of the findings that have been presented or discussed here Commissioners are on page six and.
If I can jump in, um, more succinct, on the bottom of page five, conditions of approval relating to agriculture are going to be conditions number two, ten point H, ten point I, ten point J, ten point N, ten point R, eleven and fifteen C.
Right. And it goes on to page six, right?
Yes, so, um, on page six, that breaks down, um, the conditions of approval that I just mentioned and what specific finding of fact um, as numbered in the staff report that it relates to. So there's a summary, um, uh, the, the first conditions of approval list is a summary of all the conditions. The following paragraph just shows how those conditions are specifically tied to, uh, individual findings for that criteria.
And we heard nothing from the agricultural users around. We haven't had any feedback.
Mr. Chair, we received no.
Not that they don't have feedback, they didn't provide any at this point, right? Okay. Thank you. Commissioners? Anything further related to agriculture? Okay, let's, let's move on to agricultural water users.
Absolutely. Um, so impacts on agricultural water users. Uh, findings of fact, according to certificate of survey number three, four, one, six, four, seven, zero. A ten foot private irrigation utility easement exists along the southern property line of the subject property uh, to accommodate an open irrigation ditch that feeds a pump vault serving a pivot irrigation system. Um, a twelve inch PVC underground, uh, irrigation overflow pipe continues, um, to the outlet near the southeast property line. As part of the proposal, the applicant will record a boundary line adjustment, uh, at the time of final plat to move the south property line ten feet to the north to place the irrigation facilities entirely within a twenty foot private irrigation and utility easement on the properties to the south. Uh, moving on, current irrigation, irrigation ditch is located within the ten foot private irrigation and utility easement and consists of an open ditch along the southwest line and a buried overflow pipe uh, along the southeast property line. The applicant is proposing to bury the existing open ditch along the entire southern property line, um, and conduct a boundary line adjustment um, uh, to, to accommodate the twenty foot.
So let's talk about that for a minute. So
Sure.
if that ditch is on property outside of this subdivision ultimately, and then it is buried, the easement remains and that, uh, use of that water that runs in that pipe or whatever they're going to do, uh, is, is their business, but it doesn't, it, it, one of the things I was concerned about is we've, and we've had in the past in other subdivisions where you have an open ditch or irrigation ditch and it can pose a hazard for children, whatever. And we've required a fence in the past that time, but if this is buried and that easement remains, uh, the risk of someone falling in an open ditch is eliminated, right?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. And the condition of approval is worded such that if they do bury that, um, irrigation, those irrigation facilities, then the fence is not required.
Okay.
They may still build a fence if they want, but it's not, it won't be required. Exactly.
Yeah. And to me, it removes a major safety hazard or a potential safety hazard. Um, which we've seen in other large ditches, but anyway, continue unless there's questions or comments Commissioners at this.
Could you show on the map where that, uh, irrigation line runs?
Actually, there we go. So highlighted in orange. Is where that will be located.
And ultimately won't even be part of the, part of the property. And, and apparently this is the irrigation line that Mr. LaFronboys was talking about when he mentioned it. The, the need for that easement on the far east.
Hmm, that's correct.
Thank you. Sorry, interrupt.
I want to look at that picture.
Which one, this one?
Not that one. That one.
Okay.
There again, I'm worrying about noxious weeds. And that picture shows a lot of plant growth. And I think we've got a noxious weed problem to begin with. But I just wanted to look at that picture. Um, now go back to the map you were on, please. Okay, so should the irrigator? Or, and I'm not sure who the authority on this ditch is. I don't believe this is a Helena Valley irrigation district ditch. I think this is a private ditch. Does the person who is benefiting from the water have the authority to go in and dig up that line that somebody had, you know, there's a, it's got a rupture or something? Um, are we protecting the rights of the person, the irrigator who that belongs to? Can you talk about that?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, um, so the LaFronboys, um, own the subject property, the, the subdivision um, to be created and then, um, uh, the properties to the south. And they're the ones that benefit from the use of this private, uh, irrigation ditch. And they're the ones that have indicated that they will, uh, bury that.
The burying isn't the problem. The problem is after it's buried, thirty years from now, we come back. Um, somebody has subdivided these other two lots, but the heirs of Mr. LaFronboys still own tract A one, B one slash A, and they want to continue to irrigate. Somebody has, uh, taken a backhoe and dug some kind of a, you know, they needed their cable TV or whatever, wrecked that pipe. Do they, does the irrigator have the authority to go in and work on that pipeline without getting permission from the new owners of the lots to the south?
Mr. Chair, all right, Commissioner Payne, that's, that's a great question. I, you have any thoughts on that, Greg?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, you know, we're, we're looking at what is a private irrigation easement and the, the terms of that easement then are, are up to those people that hold that private easement. And, and how that's worked out. Again, this is, would be off the property, so not on in our subdivision. So anything that occurs within that easement, again, it's up to the terms of that private irrigation easement. As a general rule in, in subdivision, um, this Montana subdivision plan act is very protective of irrigators. Right? We want to make sure that we're protecting the rights of irrigators, um, and allowing them to continue to do so. Again, this is outside of the subdivision. It would be outside of that subdivision. So the easement, um, really is, for us, the concern is the risk um, that open water presents to, um, the general public. And so we've got conditions in place, uh, hopefully mitigating or reducing that risk through the requirement of some fencing. However, we also note that if the open water is piped, um, and it's, it's now underground, that that risk is, isn't there? And to the degree with that would require a fence. I don't know if I quite answered your question, but, um, you know, it would be up to the, the elders of that easement.
You shot the hell out of the tree, but you missed the pigeon. Um, I am thinking about the interest of the irrigator and their ability to come in and protect their the, the water that is in the pipe so that they can get it to their property. And if it's interrupted through the actions of the new owners of tract A, whatever it is there to the south. I mean, is the utility easement, which is, I take it, a private utility easement that does that? Provide the protections, uh, afforded a standard utility easement, say Northwestern Energy. They have the right to go in, work on the property, and it doesn't matter if I want them there or not. Does the private utility holder have that same right to go in and fix it?
See Nico's finger on that, but.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so and actually, it's war jump in when I go wrong here, but so the nature of this easement is not on the current property that's being subdivided, correct? So there's, so the easement discussion, the access to that easement are secondary and outside of the subdivision approval process. So.
We must consider impacts on agricultural water users. And the water user is not part of the subdivision, but it's clearly, we, it's something we have to talk about and come to an understanding.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Payne, absolutely. So I think in my review of the staff report, this proposed subdivision doesn't have any specific impacts to what this irrigation easement is doing. One of the issues that comes up with, once we have the subdivision is that there's an open irrigation easement where water's running through. So then there's a safety issue that exists in our subdivision regulations.
But that involves the children who live in the subdivision and does not, we're not asked. We are supposed to be looking out for the impacts on the agricultural water user. That is the irrigator. Not the homeowners. not the homeowners. So the fence is not the issue.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, so I'm going to say this, and this word you jump in, is that this subdivision, in terms of impacting the use, the only impact that is being found as a fact would be addressing a safety issue for that subdivision. And so the applicant has opportunities to address that safety issue through various means. If the applicant, I believe the applicant owns that easement, however they choose to address their easement, I think they're certainly going to choose to do that within the confines of the subdivision regulations. We've had the discussion about a fence or burying it. So that, I think it sounds like either option is up to them, and so they get to make that determination. And either determination that they meet, meet, or excuse me, either determination that they make is going to meet our regulations in addressing the safety. So you're absolutely correct. We need to be making those considerations. In this specific case, the only impact that this subdivision is having, again, because that easement's not on the subject property at all. If, for example, that irrigation easement was the diagonal easement that we have for the other thing, then we would have to have a whole host of different discussions, uh factual analysis, conditions of approval to make sure that an irrigator in that instance wouldn't be impacted. But because this isn't even on the subdivision, it's actually a very limited impact that's occurring.
Right?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Further.
Just one last uh finding that I I will highlight. Um, the four proposed residential lots within the subdivision will not utilize any Helena Valley Irrigation District um uh water um supplied through that private irrigation ditch.
Right, the water for these homes is going to be provided by individual wells. It's the plan.
Correct.
Right. Okay, anything further uh related to the facts on impacts to water users? Um, can you talk about the conditions again related and tied to these facts? We'll go over those a little bit?
Absolutely. So conditions of approval number 9D, 9E, 10H, 10J, 10N, 10R, and 20 um relate to the findings of fact um that are outlined in the staff report uh for agricultural water user facilities. And the conclusion is made the Bitterroot Estates subdivision will have adverse impacts on agricultural water user facilities. The impacts to agricultural water user facilities as set forth in the findings of fact will be mitigated by the uh imposed conditions of approval based on the record when satisfactorily completed.
Thank you, and and uh just looking at some of those conditions related to the findings, like 9D is that discusses that uh boundary line between the two and how they're planning to make sure that that easement is completely on the southern property and I think that's related to that one, and then 10 HJ and N.
10HJ and N, those are going to be the restrictive covenants, um essentially giving notice to the property owners that they need to comply with best management practices for controlling erosion. Vegetation management, exactly.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Commissioners, questions about um the facts and conclusions related to water users? Want to move on? Okay, impacts to local services.
Okay, impacts. Okay, to impacts to local services, I'm going to break it down into um some of the subcategories. So the first one with regard to water and wastewater, starting on page eight. Water is proposed to be provided to each lot via individual onsite wells. Well log data from the Montana Bureau of Mines and Geology, um GWIC, uh from the three closest wells indicate that the average total well depth is between 59 and 112 feet. But the average static water level is approximately 8.5 feet. Um, the Water Quality Protection District um did provide a comment um and they uh have indicated that the wells, with the exception of well GWIC 207208 near the intersection of Juniper Drive, show consistent depths to groundwater of three to five feet. Um, uh GWIC well 207208's depth to groundwater is approximately 20 feet. These data indicate that the project proposal area experiences high groundwater levels. And the Water Quality Protection District recommends all development be conducted with consideration for high groundwater levels. Plans for water supply are subject to review and approval by the Montana Department of Environmental Quality and the Lewis and Clark um County Public Health Environmental Services Division. Um, those are some highlights of um the water um going into wastewater, wastewater.
Let's talk about water first, just to exhaust that. Commissioners, discussion about water, really high groundwater, water uh accessing that and quantity is likely not an issue, but uh individual wells and this um, we were talking about uh this the other day in that um the use that's proposed is less than the 10 a 10 acre feet for the entire subdivision. Is that correct?
Um, yes, so the applicant is proposing to use exempt well for um the four lots here. Uh, with the application, they did submit a predetermination letter that was issued by the DNRC. Uh, since the Broadwater case, um predetermination letters are no longer being issued. Uh, the DNRC has provided um additional guidance. Um, they issued a new guidance document on combined appropriations um earlier this summer, and I guess with regard to that, I would just say based on the best available information, um at the time of this preliminary plat review, um, it would appear that um uh the proposal um complies with with that guidance, but um that's just simply based on best available data that we have right now.
Yeah, I think it's important that we just address it upfront. Um, as far as like, as you said, best available data, we believe this is uh within reason. Um, according to what we know, where we are in process right now. Um, Commissioners, any other questions about water supply? They're not going to be using grasslands water supply?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. So, yeah, um, this uh the subdivision was within 500 feet of a component of um the grasslands water um uh system. They did reach out um and were provided notification that uh there was no capacity to connect to that system.
Because we encourage, if they're within 500 feet, you you need to go ask and try to be part of a community system if possible, or.
Yes.
Available resources if possible, and um they were denied that, right?
Correct.
So this is the option that they have left.
Yes.
Commissioners, other comments about those facts? All right. Onto wastewater.
Onto wastewater. Wastewater treatment is proposed to be provided uh by individual onsite systems utilizing septic tank, um pressure-dose sandline drain field. Groundwater monitoring conducted in 2022 indicated high groundwater in the area. However, all 10 monitoring wells showed water levels deeper than five feet, which exceeds the minimum groundwater level threshold of four feet required by the Sanitation and Subdivision Act. Um, in individual onsite wastewater treatment systems are subject to review and approval by DEQ. And with regard to water and wastewater, um condition of approval number one in 10Q um uh addressed the findings of fact in there. Condition um of approval number one over is essentially um the need for DEQ approval for water and wastewater. And condition of approval number 10Q is one of the um county covenants noticing um uh that the lot owner has waived the right to protest joining a special district for the purpose of providing community water and or wastewater treatment system improvements and or maintenance.
So let's talk about this a little bit, because off the cuff, somebody might be listening today, and my first read of this, it's like, holy Jesus, the groundwater is only four or five feet. How in the world are you going to put wastewater on the ground? And how does that work? And what kind of system without tainting the groundwater, right? Um, but uh the fact is, is that uh there are systems that can work, and there has to be a four-foot separation. Um, and if you use these sand filter systems, then uh they can meet the requirements, and it isn't just a guess, as you just said, that there's going to be a requirement to to uh environmental health, and DEQ will have to prove essentially the wastewater system, so.
Absolutely, yeah. So um you're correct, with the application material, um, the applicant is required to submit um what we call substantial incredible evidence that they do meet the uh sanitation and subdivision requirements. Um, some additional things in the Montana Subdivision and Plating Act. Um, one of those things is making sure that um they provided a a non-deg analysis. Um, so making sure that the impacts of wastewater treatment um uh are considered. DEQ will review um water and wastewater proposal um to ensure compliance and um that COSA uh is a condition of approval.
And it is a fact that those systems will have to be permitted.
Correct.
Right, absolutely. Okay, Commissioners, any discussion? Okay. All right, let's move on.
Okay, moving on to uh solid waste. The property is within the scratch gravel solid waste district and contract collection and disposal of solid waste is available. Um, there are no conditions of approval required to mitigate uh any impacts to solid waste under local services.
Okay. Let's move on to mail delivery.
Mail delivery. Applicant proposes to utilize mail collection boxes within an existing mailbox cluster serving the grasslands development. Um, that's going to be located at the intersection of Blue Grass Lane and Red Top Lane. It's about a third of a mile away. Um, any new mailbox facilities need to be approved by the USPS in accordance with their specifications. Um, and so to that regard, conditions of approval number six, 9C and 15B um uh are associated with the findings of fact uh in mail delivery.
For sure want people to get their mail. With county might have something to send to them, right?
Absolutely.
Um, before you go on to utilities, Commissioners, I want to check your uh status. It's 11:30. Uh, five-minute break would not be out of order if you'd like to take a five-minute break, or do you want to power on? It looks like there might be a break. Any any breaks needed over here?
I think we should power on. We could be here till Tuesday.
Well, we might be here till Tuesday, and that might be okay, right?
No.
As long as we get it right. All right, let's uh keep going. We'll check in another 10 minutes, and we'll see if we want to take a break. Go ahead.
Sounds good. So findings of fact uh regarding utilities. Uh, the subject, the subdivision will be served with electrical power, natural gas and internet service, which will be extended underground to the proposed subdivision. There is an overhead power uh line that exists along the north of the subject property. Utility easements will have to be provided in accordance with the county subdivision regulations where utilities are or will be installed. Uh, and to that end, condition of approval number four, 9A, 9B, 10E, and 15C are required to mitigate impacts on utilities.
So I want to talk about this a little bit again. Um, we we discussed it at the outset, but we did get feedback for Northwestern Energy. Um, very much stated their concern that they wanted to have room to put their utilities in, but um that is part of this contemplation. So can we talk about those in more, a little more detail, the conditions that relate to making sure that that need is being met?
Absolutely.
Just real quickly.
So again, I will summarize that what Northwestern Energy is requesting is nothing out of the ordinary. Um, this is a pretty routine comment. Um, and condition number four A, and I'll just read it. Um, prior to the construction of any roads or the installation of any utilities, three copies of the plans for the subject road and utilities shall be submitted to the county community development and planning department. The community development and planning department shall submit these plans to Public Works for review and approval. Said plans shall meet the requirements of the county Public Works manual and subdivision regulations. So before any road um construction takes place, road plans need to be developed, and those need to take into consideration um the location of utilities.
Right, and that is standard. It's what we do every time now. So we want to make sure that there's a utility plan going forward. It's not an afterthought like, oh, we built this road. I hope you find a spot to put your utilities. It's all part of the whole, I'll call it the cake mix of the plan.
For sure.
Right?
Exactly, and to go on to condition number nine. Um, so if, for example, within the proposed 60-foot county road and utility easement, if additional easements are needed for the location of utilities, condition number nine notes that um a final subdivision plat must be prepared in accordance with applicable state survey requirements and show and describe the following, and it's going to be things such as all existing access and utility easements adjacent to the subject property, adjacent and proposed county road, public access, and utility easements. Um, uh, is so that will include any additional utility easements that may be needed, you know, and are determined at the time the road plans are established. Those will simply need to be shown on the face of the final plat per 9A and 9B condition of approval.
Right, okay, that's good. And it's important to talk about these things, because when when we leave and when we're done here, someone's going to be living in these homes, and we want to know that we left them in good shape in terms of uh having utilities and with the lack of uh remaining issues if we can uh within our jurisdictional powers, hopefully, so. All right, Commissioners, any questions, comments, discussion about the facts related to utilities? Okay, roads and traffic.
Okay, uh, moving on to roads and traffic. Uh, direct access to the subdivision lots will be off of the proposed extension of Rosette Lane, which is an internal local road within the grasslands phase four subdivision. The applicant will construct the extension of Rosette Lane within Bitterroot Estates um to a minimum of a local road section number one, uh gravel standard, um which is allowed uh per the Public Works manual, section 4.19. Approximately 427 feet of the extension of Rosette Lane will include 30 feet of the 60-foot county road and utility easement on the adjacent parcel that tracked A1B dash one um of COS 3416470, that family transfer parcel. Uh, the owner of this property will be required to sign the final plat authorizing dedication of the county road and utility easement on their property.
Let's just talk about that for a second. So um it's an important fact to discuss, because to me, again, at the outset, it's like, wow, you're planning a road on somebody else's property. Uh, whether it's a family member or not, it's not technically their property. So before they can come in, one of the conditions of approval will be that that permission and that easement is all those permissions, whatever the proper terms are, are granted and documented. And prior to any final plat, those will have to be established and confirmed.
Mr. Chair, that's correct, and there will be conditions of approval to that effect that we can either go for now or later.
Okay.
Um, the applicant is proposing to extend the county road and utility easement along the south property line to adjacent lots to the east and the west for future road connections, but has requested a variance to the construction of the physical road within the county road easement. Um, there is a um uh the 60-foot county road and utility easement for Rosette Lane crosses the 90-foot pure reclamation underground drain. Um, with the application materials, they did submit a special use permit uh issued by the HBID um that allows for the construction of the road um over this easement.
So if there were any special conditions or whatever from the irrigation district per their permission. per their permission, they would provide those. It's it's not on us necessarily to to do that piece. They have to get permission from them to put a road over it, but if there were any like special conditions that they had, they would work with them on that.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. So they submitted the special use permit that authorized them to construct um, Rosette Lane. So um, the road, uh, but if any driveways um, to say, you know, lot three um, cross that, that property owner would need to obtain a special use permit um, um, of their own. There is a condition of of approval. It's one of the restrictive covenants that puts homeowners on notice that they do need to obtain that special use permit. Uh, with the application materials, a TAS was submitted. Um, that traffic impact study um, estimated that the project will generate about thirty eight additional vehicle trips per day, contributing approximately four percent additional vehicles to Carmen Road and less than one percent additional vehicle trips to Frontage Road. Traffic analysis data provided with the application indicates that additional traffic generated by the subdivision will not create any capacity problems and all roadways and intersections will continue to operate at or within an acceptable level of service.
Let's talk about that for a minute. Um, the traffic impact study, I mean, we're not, we're not just guesstimating what what they need or how they're going to impact. There's been a third party study done and um, grasslands also has been um, part of this discussion in terms of their impacts on their roads, future RID potential, how they're going to be um, integrated with with that. Is that correct as well?
Absolutely. So there will be a RID um, uh, for the internal subdivision road of this. Um, but part of that traffic impact study, and it was an additional um, information that was requested from Ablyn Traffic Services to anticipate how traffic will be dispersed within the grassland subdivision. Um, those numbers were um, produced and again, it's approximately four percent and one percent to Carmen Road. Um, and there will be an RID um, uh, that will contribute or uh, will contribute to the grasslands RID um, for maintenance of those roads.
They're proportionate, sure.
Exactly.
Um, so in addition, talking about the road, Rosette being extended, is it Rosette, right? Did I say that?
Correct.
Being extended and um, there's talk that our standard is a gravel standard for the amount of traffic that's going to be there. The developers saying they may pave that road. Either way, um, they need to work with it is um, the fact that they'll be working with uh, public works on whatever standard they choose to uh, take and or build, I guess, there.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. That's condition of approval number four.
Yeah. Condition four and related to these uh, facts for sure in terms of uh, the um, ultimate placement and construction of that street road, whatever you want to call it. I think it's a road, I guess we'll call it in this case.
Yes.
Go ahead. Keep, keep going.
Okay, yeah. And then I think the last um, uh, big highlight, um, and as we just discussed, internal roads within the subdivision will be included in a new rural improvement district for the maintenance of the roads. Um, uh, traffic from the proposed subdivision will primarily affect Rosette Lane to Carmen Road and Carmen Road to Frontage Road, and it's anticipated to contribute less than four percent um, average annual daily trips. Those impacts um, from the uh, additional traffic will be mitigated through contribution to the grassland RID and Pleasant Valley RID on Carmen Road. And um,
Now we have essentially uh, well, we have passed the variance, so that changes things as well or adds to the discussion in that um, the uh, extensions are not going to be built, but they'll be established. And I don't think the extensions have a name, right? There's no name.
And there is no name worked with um, address coordinator, and at this point, it didn't seem appropriate unless the variance was not granted.
There's ad.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
So with regard to conditions of approval for for local roads, um, conditions of approval number four, five, seven, eight, nine, ten B, ten C, ten G, ten S, ten T and T, ten U. Um, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen C, sixteen, eighteen, that should say nineteen and twenty are all required to mitigate impacts on roads under traffic uh, or impacts on roads and traffic under local services. And I'm happy to go through some of those conditions of approval.
Commissioners, comments or questions related to the roads? By any means.
Forward.
We'll go over the conditions a little more thoroughly when we get there, but
Okay.
The point is that there's um, the facts that have been established or proposed here. Um, they do great impacts and those impacts are addressed by the conditions. We discussed many of them. I mean, we we've we're crossing a that easement by the irrigation district as well as encumbering someone else's property uh, with that easement. And then, of course, the variance impacts or creates its own set of discussion points which we've covered. So go ahead.
Okay. So findings of fact regarding schools, the proposed subdivision is located in the Helena School District. Um, and the application estimates that two additional schoolchildren um, will be attending the district uh, as a result of the subdivision. No conditions of approval are required uh, to mitigate impacts to school under local services as there's no known capacity uh, constraints within the district to accommodate the additional students generated by the subdivision.
Hey. Commissioners, any comments there? Emergency services.
Okay, moving on to emergency services. The application indicates that the existing offsite fire protection system located in the grassland subdivision will be used to provide fire protection water supply. Um, fire hydrants are located on Love Grass Lane and Spangle Top Lane. Um, and are uh, these hydrants are owned, operated and maintained by the grassland estates homeowners association. Um, they did, uh, the applicant did submit a letter from the HOA authorizing the use of the fire protection system. Uh, but they will be required to um, uh, meet all the requirements of appendix K um, demonstrating that um, easements ag- agreements um, to utilize that system along with other um, requirements for using offsite systems in appendix K are met. The grasslands HOA owns, operates and maintains uh, the grassland fire suppression water supply and therefore is not included within a rural improvement district. A condition of approval will require notification through covenants that lot owners waive their right to protest the creation of an RID for the purpose of maintaining fire protection features that serve the subdivision.
And did we get any uh, feedback from West Valley Fire?
Um, Mr. Chair, we did um, submit a request for agency comments. We did not receive any comments back from them. Uh, excuse me, the hydrants um, in the grasslands uh, development have been flow tested and are able to produce over a thousand gallon per minute for two hours at twenty um, PSI. A condition of approval will require the subdivider to provide a certification from an engineer um, stating that any existing new or improved fire protection water supplies uh, will comply with the requirements of preliminary approval. The Trilake County Regional Wildfire Protection Plan um, notes that the proposed subdivision is within an area ranked low um, on the county local hazard assessment map and is in mitigation class one. Property has um, consists of, you know, low grasses and slopes. Um, a vegetation management plan, however, will be prepared for the property as required by the subdivision regulations.
So just to go over that again, the all of the jurisdictions, column jurisdictions, all of the entities that um, we rely on for good information related to fire protection have been at least invited to make comments. So West Valley didn't make comment, but and and then the requirements of the of our sub regs are are pretty clear in terms of um, they'll submit a written verification that the, that the system they're planning to use does meet those requirements and will be protective from our standard perspective. And then this area is not a high risk area according to the Trilake or Tri Tri County Fire Safe Working Group, um, which is important. So not only they have that protection, they have agreement to use that protection. And um, it'll have to be certified that it is adequate prior to final plat.
That's correct.
Okay.
So that is with regard to um, fire protection, conditions of approval number three, nine G, ten P, seventeen and nineteen um, uh, address impacts um, on emergency services.
Okay. Thank you.
With regard to parkland, um, the proposed first minor subdivision does not is not required to dedicate parkland and therefore there's no conditions of approval that are required.
Hey.
Shall we move on to natural environment or?
Break now?
Yep.
Okay, we need a break. It is uh, well, let's let's uh, take a break until high noon. I'll meet you back here. I need, thank you. Thank you for the break and uh, we will pick up at impacts on natural environment.
Okay, so um, with regard to impacts on the natural environment, subject property is relatively level and provides good building sites that will minimize uh, the flow of stormwater and minimize soil erosion that might occur. Um, one thing that I will bring up also, um, the Montana Natural Heritage Program environmental summary documents um, uh, submitted with the application materials indicated freshwater freshwater emergent wetlands on the far southeast corner of the subject property and the adjacent lot. Um, according to um, uh, well, I should say, the applicant provided a land assessment report completed by Meadowlark Search in June of twenty twenty four. In their onsite assessment, um, noted that no evidence of recurrent sustained infiltration of water in or around the area associated with with the wetland defined area exists. And furthermore, um, the what they provided a wetland determination data form which documented no hydrophytic vegetation, no hydroic soils or wetland hydrology onsite. Essentially, the Montana Natural Heritage Program, um, their environmental summary summary indicated that there might be wetlands. Their mapping system is typically based on aerial imagery, so it's not as um, uh, you know, accurate as say, an onsite assessment. The subdivision regulations do allow um, an applicant to provide documentation um, by a qualified individual. Um, and in this case, they they provided that um, assessment. Um, and that indicates that there are no wetlands on the subject property. And so to that end, um, water body setbacks that are addressed in the subdivision regulation, um, those setbacks and buffer areas um, will not be required because there are no water bodies, water courses, wetland or riparian areas um, on the property.
So that was a a pretty thorough um, undertaking in terms of the kind of the ten thousand foot level, might have been ten thousand feet from their aerial, saying, hey, there could be wetlands in the area. Let's get an expert to come in on the ground. Check it out. There are no wetlands on this particular property and thus those uh, potential mitigations are unnecessary for if it were a wet.
Absolutely. Yes. Uh, stormwater runoff associated with the development of the residential lots will be contained on each lot in accordance with DEQ lot layout. Um, and will be designed to meet the requirements of DEQ circular eight. Um, as was mentioned before, comments from the Water Quality Protection District recommend um, construction of future modification of stormwater retention basins, stormwater conveyance stitches, uh, building foundations to be conducted with the expectation that groundwater will be uh, will consistently be near the land surface.
Right. And we talked about this a bit earlier, those stormwater retention, not being so deep that they would impact the the groundwater. It's going to be.
Yeah. Turn your mic. I turned on the mic. Um, so does the problem with the high water table, um, are they, are people going to be able to build basements in this? Can any of those four lots have basements?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, I it may not be wise, um, but uh, they could construct basements. Um, we don't have a condition of approval restricting construction of basements. Um, and the reason for that is because the county doesn't have a building department. So we don't have a way of um, essentially enforcing that residential basements are not constructed.
Okay, and we're kind of expecting people to use their common sense? Okay.
Mr. Commissioner Payne, yes. I will say, um, if I can add, there is a condition of approval, um, and it's uh, in the restrictive covenants that does um, essentially notify property owners that, hey, be aware that groundwater um, uh, availability and and uh, is present in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on, all cut and fill will be revegetated in accordance with the approved revegetation plan that's associated with the five year weed management plan. Uh, the condition of approval will require the subdivider to provide a stormwater drainage plan meeting their requirements of the county subdivision regulations and DEQ. Um, I mentioned this before, but a Montana pollution discharge elimination system permit is required as a condition of approval if disturbance um, activity is um, uh, greater than one acre. Um, and then, yeah, I mentioned a five year weed management plan will be required as a condition of approval to prevent prop- uh, propagation of noxious weeds as a result of ground disturbance. So.
Oh, I was just gonna say likely the fact is that that the ground disturbance permit will have to be acquired because of building of the road, for example. I mean, they're going to disturb more than an acre of ground overall, likely.
This is correct, yes. So yeah, those are um, the the highlighting findings um, of fact with regard to the natural environment. Uh, conditions of approval number two, ten F, ten J, ten H, eleven and twelve um, address those findings.
And we'll talk about those more when we get into the findings here um, and how they relate back.
Perfect.
All right, comments or questions uh, around natural environment? Commissioners, on the impacts on wildlife?
Okay. Um, with regard to impacts on wildlife, uh, landowners are encouraged to install wildlife friendly fencing containing contain domestic animals and secure solid waste to reduce wildlife incidents whenever possible. Conditions of approval require restrictive covenant, providing notice about installing wildlife friendly fencing and keeping domestic pets restrained on the property. Impacts to wildlife are anticipated to to be minimal, just given the proximity to higher density residential development in the area.
Okay. Comments, questions? Wildlife? Wildlife habitat?
Okay, wildlife habitat. Again, it's pretty similar. Wildlife, wildlife habitat are are intertwined. Uh, but landowners are encouraged to install wildlife friendly fencing, contain domestic animals and But landowners are encouraged to install wildlife friendly fencing, contain domestic animals and secure solid waste to reduce wildlife incidents. A five year weed management plan is required as a condition of approval to ensure that noxious weeds as a result of ground disturbance won't negatively impact wildlife and wildlife habitat in particular. Restrictive covenants will be in place to provide notice about maintaining the property in a weed free manner.
Which is a theme throughout here.
Yes. I am reading in it states, another condition of approval will provide the opportunity to financially guarantee any improvements required by the weed management plan. It is is that to be provided by the developer or by the homeowner?
So if, for example, there are improvements or work that needs to be done with regard to the weed management plan at the time of final plat, they can provide a financial guarantee to allow them to go through final plat process. But.
They put up a bond?
Exactly.
If they had.
If they need to, okay, just certain governmental entities have run into problems where the bond was, you know, good for five years and after that it ran out and the developer continued to have the problems for the next 10 years and the bond was gone and governmental entity couldn't do anything about it. So be cautious.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, impacts on public health and safety?
Impacts on public health and safety, the area is located within seismic zone three. There is a restrictive covenant notifying the homeowners of the requirement to seismic building code. Excuse me, a restrictive covenant notifying home homeowners of the seismic building codes will be placed as a condition of approval. There's no seismic rockfalls, slides, land mud or snowslides, steep slopes or unstable or expansive soils, soil conditions that are present within or near the proper project area. Lewis and Clark County is rated as a zone one county with regard to radon, which means it may have predicted average indoor radar radon screening levels greater than four pico curries per liter. There is a restrictive covenant notifying property owners of this fact. According to the Tri County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the property has a low fuel hazard rating. However, a vegetation management plan will be prepared for the property as a requirement of the subdivision regulations. And then I know that we discussed this previously, there is some potential for groundwater contamination due to groundwater levels identified in the area. As we've discussed before, according to the site evaluation completed in 2022, 10 groundwater monitoring wells identified peak groundwater levels between 5.7 and 7.19 feet below the ground service. Mitigation can be achieved by approved siding installation and maintenance of the proposed individual wastewater treatment systems.
And we talked about that and they're kind of specialized systems, the sound sand filter systems because of the proximity of of groundwater.
That is correct, yes.
Right, and permitting is required, so there'll be some oversight on that to make sure they're done properly to for best protection of folks' groundwater there.
For sure, both DEQ certificate of subdivision approval and then individual septic permits as well.
Right.
There is a 90 foot wide Bureau of Reclamation Underground Drain Easement that traverses the property from the northwest corner towards the center of the south property line. There are conditions of approval addressing development notification to property owners of this easement as well as notification of any requirements to get a special use permit and restrictions with regard to development in and around that easement. There are no other natural or manmade hazards that should preclude the subdivision of the property as outlined in the subdivision list of subdivision constraints. And then lastly, with regard to fire protection, as I mentioned before, the property will utilize the grassland subdivision phase four hydrants, which are located on Love Grass Lane and Spangle Top Lane.
Right. We have discussed that.
I just. Do the developers have a, and I know they have a a letter saying it's okay. I'm pretty sure we're going to need a binding contract between grasslands and this subdivision to allow them to use those fire services of a separate entity. And I'm hoping they'll make sure that gets done rather than just, oh, we've got this letter. They they need a real contract, right? Hey, Mr. Lawyer. Thank you.
Chair and Commissioners, yep, so the requirement that the applicant provide that ability, that's something that they will need to provide to us that and that's also additional, something that staff sets forth, so to see if it meets the requirements.
Okay, and it is not just somebody signing, yeah, you can do this. It has to be a binding contract.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, back to what you're doing.
And.
Sorry, because as you said, you know, now you got the lawyer brain working, so.
Oops.
It can be some agreement, additional easements, it can be a myriad of things that the applicant and that other entity are going to work out. But yes, the applicant's going to have to provide to the satisfaction of the county that they meet that requirement, that there's going to be fire protection available, so.
Thank you.
And to just follow up, Commissioner Payne, there are five requirements. If a developer wants to use an offsite water supply system, number one is that at the time of final plat, that the applicant has secured any necessary easements and or agreements from the affected property owners and or homeowners association, so that will be included as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Okay. I can't remember if I mentioned this, but with regard to public health and safety, conditions of approval number three, nine F, ten C, ten G, ten I, ten K, ten L, ten M, ten P, ten S, ten T and ten U are required to mitigate impacts on public health and safety.
Thank you. Okay. We're on to subdivision regulations, compliance with subdivision.
Absolutely. So the proposed subdivision meets all subdivision regulations and it will remain in compliance with these regulations if all conditions of approval are satisfied and the required variance is approved.
Check on that.
Yeah. And move on to survey requirements.
So just to just to comment there, you brought up the variance and it has been approved and thus brings it into compliance via the request.
Correct, yes.
Go ahead. Survey requirements?
With regard to survey requirements, a land survey and plat completed by a registered land surveyor in the state of Montana will need to be prepared. A review of the plat by the Community Development and Planning Department, Lewis and Clark County Survey Review Committee and the examining land surveyor at the time of final plat application will ensure that the plat conforms to all conditions of approval, rules and regulations. And condition of approval number nine, I know we've talked about condition of approval number nine. This addresses that require requirement to comply with survey rules and regulations.
Any of their commissioners? Ultimately, that's, we've been talking a lot about these easements and and the the new road and the whole nine yards and the irrigation ditches, those will all be displayed on the final plat along with the new lots and where utility easements are, the whole bit will be, all of that will be required as part of the meeting all the survey requirements.
This is correct, Mr. Chair, and condition number nine includes A through G of specific items that will need to be shown on on that final plat.
Great, thank you.
So and that kind of ties into the next one, provision of easements within and to the proposed subdivision, the location and installation of any planned utilities. Utility easements will have to be shown and described on the plat in accordance with the subdivision regulation and in consultation with the utility providers where utilities are or will be installed and where necessary for future extension of services. So conditions of approval that address location of of utilities, that's going to be condition of approval number nine A, nine B, ten E and 15 H.
Okay, questions, comments, commissioners? We've talked a lot about utilities, so I think we're pretty good understanding about the the facts related to utilities and again, you know, point out that we had the comment from Northwestern Energy and it's been thoroughly addressed, I think, so, okay.
Excellent. Provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within the proposed subdivision. So legal and physical access to the subdivision will exist via a proposed extension of Rosette Lane from grasslands phase four road network. The applicant is requesting a variance to chapter 11 H16 to allow for a hammerhead turnaround at the terminus of Rosette Lane in lieu of constructing road connections to the east and west property lines within a 60 foot county road and utility easement. As we've discussed also, a 30 foot wide portion of the proposed extension of Rosette Lane will be on an adjacent property, track 2A B dash one of COS 3416470. And the owner of this property will be required to dedicate this county road and utility easement as part of the final plat approval.
Okay.
And so conditions of approval number four, five, nine A, nine B, ten B and ten C will address impacts to legal and physical access to each parcel.
Right, like to bring up the variance again, that has been approved, so it affects this this part. And by granting the variance, we're not limiting in any way people's access to their lots or these new lots.
Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Legal and physical access, okay.
I have a question.
Please.
In the findings of fact, the third paragraph down, it says a 30 foot wide portion of the proposed extension of Rosette Lane will be on the adjacent property. The owner of this property will be required to dedicate this county road, okay. What if the owner of this property says, no, I don't want to play ball with you. I mean, we have no control over the owner of, he is not part of this subdivision, although I recognize he is your son, but I still think we need to recognize this is not within the purview of the decision we're making. How can we include this requirement? If he's he's not a participant here.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, all of the lots are required to have physical and legal access and without that 30 foot portion, albeit on the adjacent lot, the subdivision will not exist. And so while that lot is not in the subdivision, by the time of final plat, that property will need to allow for that dedication of the public access in order to accommodate this subdivision.
So this is preliminary approval with conditions, so if they can come back and show that they've met all of them.
Okay, and so
Final plat.
The the word of advice would be make sure you have something in writing that your son is approving of this before he gets run over by a bus or something. You need we don't have any control over that other property owner. We have to have his cooperation. Make sure you've got it in writing. Thank you.
And ultimately, it may be more than that, maybe that the the dedication, the easement dedication is recorded or shown or provided some way. Is there something you want to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so yeah, so you know, part of the requirement is that's going to have to be a 60 foot public access easement and so, yep, so as part of the conditions of approval, they'll need to, you know, yes, we're going to make that to be a, to include that access that's on property outside of the subdivision, so that will either be, you know, a grant document or them signing the final plat as well, saying, you know, here's my proposal. I'm also a adjoining property owner. I'm also signing on the public dedication, so kind of like some of our other conditions of approval that the county provides. Certainly, the county's not in control of that, but that's something that the applicant is going to have to provide and then present to the county, so kind of like our discussion with the fire suppression, so you know, that's off, you know, outside of the subdivision, but that's something that the applicant then works towards and then presents to the staff and ultimately you three.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on on legal and physical access? Is that where we are? Yeah, legal physical access. Okay. Thank you very much, and that's the last one, right?
That is the last review criteria, yes.
Commissioners, we have discussed the findings of facts and we've concluded that they do have impacts and we've gone over even the conditions, talked about the conditions that are related to those findings and those impacts. So at this point, we need to take action on adopting the findings of fact for this subdivision. And I would just say, including the variance request or the approval of the variance request, which impacts our findings.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, approve the findings of fact related to subdivision, including the variance request approval and its impacts. Okay, commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. That's great. We're moving on. Now we want to take up the conditions of approval, which we've been discussing all along. However, we'll get into them in a little bit more detail and then hopefully have an opportunity to take action on it. Please, let's just go over them a little bit here.
Absolutely, and I, just for a little bit of point of clarification, this step six, it's the potential adverse impacts and so the draft motion is to adopt the conclusion that the subdivision will have adverse impacts. I broke it out separately from step seven, which talks about adopting conclusion.
Yeah, let's go back to step six.
Sure.
I kind of included in my comments, but and when we were adopting the findings, but these are the commissioners who take action on the potential adverse impacts associated with potential subdivision or proposed subdivision, so we'd need another motion that well, it's on the it's on the screen there if you'd like to make it.
Is so explain to me how, okay, we've already got a motion on the table.
No, oh, for the overall subdivision.
I I did a motion just two minutes ago.
That was for the findings of fact and we approved that.
Okay, and that has been approved, so this is a different.
So this is a conclusion that that there are adverse impacts.
Okay.
And that well, let's read it.
Okay, I see.
Adoption of the conclusion. Yes, you can read it.
Okay.
So we're recognizing those adverse impacts.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the conclusion the proposed Bitterroot Estate subdivision will have adverse effects on the impact criteria as explained by staff.
Moved and seconded? Moved and seconded uh, to adopt the conclusion about, of the, uh, related to the adverse impacts as, as described by Commissioner Payne, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we address those impacts with the, with the conditions, please, sorry for that.
Oh, no, you're just fine, um, and I will say there are twenty-two conditions of approval, I'm going to just kind of highlight, um, them instead of reading them verbatim, um, condition number one, uh, discusses the need for DEQ approval of wastewater treatment and water supply systems, um, this mitigates finding effect under impacts on water and wastewater under local services.
So, Commissioners, any comments or discussion around that? We've discussed it pretty thoroughly, go ahead.
Okay, condition number two, um, discusses the five-year weed management plan and revegetation plan, um, for the proposed subdivision, um, and it mitigates findings of fact under impacts on agriculture, impacts on the natural environment, impacts on wildlife and wildlife habitat.
Thank you, we've discussed this pretty thoroughly as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Condition number three, um, uh, is with regard to the, um, fire protection, uh, requirements, um, and, uh, specifically ensuring that, uh, the proposal will comply with Appendix K of the, um, subdivision regulations, the, uh, standards are outlined, uh, in A and B of that condition.
Thank you.
And that, um, yes.
Four.
Four, um, it relates to construction of internal access roads, um, and in specific, in particular, uh, the requirement that any roads and utilities, um, be, the plan be reviewed, um, and meet the requirements of the Public Works Manual and Subdivision Regulations, um, that addresses findings of fact under impacts on utilities and impacts on roads and traffic under local services, and the provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within the proposed subdivision.
Thank you, and we've had quite a bit of discussion on that as well.
Excellent. Condition number five, um, addresses the need to obtain an approach permit from Public Works to extend, um, Rosette Lane, um, that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on roads and traffic under local services, and the provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within the proposed subdivision.
Thank you.
Condition number six, uh, relates to mailbox, um, units, uh, and in particular, um, the applicant will need to provide documentation, the USPS verifying their review and approval of the location, um, and installation, uh, of those mailbox units, that mitigates findings of fact under, uh, mail delivery and local services. Condition number seven, um, addresses, uh, documentation that Carmen Road from its intersection with Rosette Lane to its intersection with Frontage Road will meet or exceed the Public Works Manual sta- uh, standards, um, and if not, they'll be required to prepare a preliminary engineering report, uh, or to contribute to the cost of improving the road, um, and that's based on, um, uh, the applicant, its successors and assigns will be required to pay four percent of the cost associated with improving Carmen Road from its intersection with Rosette Lane to Frontage Road, um, uh, for that proportional share of impacts from the subdivision.
Right.
That mitigates findings of fact under impacts on road and traffic under local services.
Thank you.
Condition number eight is essentially the same as condition number seven, it just simply addresses, um, uh, the length of Rosette Lane from its intersection with Carmen Road to the intersection with the internal subdivision road. Um, again, noting that the impact of this subdivision, um, uh, will, uh, contribute about eighty percent, um, uh, of the traffic associated with that. That is going to mitigate findings of fact under impacts on road and traffic under local services. Condition number nine, um, notes that the applicant will need to have a final subdivision plat prepared in accordance with state survey requirements, um, it lists, um, again, A through G, things such as existing, um, access and utility easements, um, proposed county road, public access and utility easements, um, including any signatures of all affected landowners dedicating these easements, mailbox locations, um, the amended boundary line adjustment, irrigation water line easements, Bureau of Rec, underground pipe drainage ments and easements for any fire protection access if something is constructed on site.
Thank you, ten is the big one.
It is, um, ten, um, references, uh, restrictive covenants that are filed with the clerk and recorder's office, um, and there's a number of them, so I'll go by one, by one, um, ten, A, um, notices hereby given that lots one through four are permitted for single-family residential use, um, and that, uh, mitigates findings of fact under compliance with subdivision regulations. B, notices hereby given that all property owners are required to receive an approach permit from the Public Works Department prior to constructing driveways. That mitigates findings of fact under impacts on roads and traffic to local services and provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within the proposed subdivision. C, um, notices given that property owners are required to receive a special use permit from the Helena Valley Irrigation District on behalf of the Bureau of Reclamation prior to construction of driveways or other encroachments across the Bureau of Rec Underground Pipe Drain easement, that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on roads and traffic under local services, impacts on public health and safety, and provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within the subdivision. Uh, D, notices given that prior to building construction, owners should contact, uh, Lewis and Clark County Community Development and Planning to determine whether zoning regulations are applicable, that mitigates findings of fact under compliance with subdivision regulations. E, notices given that any additional replacement or relocated utility lines shall be installed underground, um, unless otherwise determined by utility providers, that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on utilities under local services, and the provision of easements within the proposed subdivision for location and installation of planned utilities. F, notices given that any exterior lighting shall be directed downward to minimize visibility beyond property lines, uh, that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on the natural environment. G, notices hereby given that each owner of the lot, um, by acceptance of a deed therefore, whether or not it's expressed in such deed, waives the right to protest, joining or amending a rural improvement district and/or special district for the installation, maintenance, preservation, and repair of roads that provide access within or to the subdivision, stormwater improvements to the subdivision, fire protection improvements for the subdivision, and that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on road and traffic under local services and public health and safety. H, notices given that construction activities shall comply with best management practices to control erosion, that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on agriculture, impacts on agricultural water users, and impacts on the natural environment. Notices given that, uh, I, uh, notices given that vegetation management plan has been prepared for the subdivision, uh, that impacts, uh, findings of fact under impact on agriculture and impacts on public health and safety. J, notices given that each lot shall be maintained in a weed-free manner, noxious weeds must be pulled, sprayed, or cut, that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on agriculture, impacts on agricultural water users, impacts on the natural environment, and impacts on wildlife and wildlife habitat. Should we continue? Are we good?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we've started now, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean.
We, we, yeah.
We probably don't.
Need to go through all of them?
Go through them all that, that way, but, um,
Yeah.
There. If there are highlights that we, we can hit, that might suffice.
Sure. Um.
We did talk about quite a few of these already. Let's see. Um, yeah, we've had discussions around the risk of radon, we had discussions around the, um, around, uh, building codes and the, the seismic zone stuff, um, and, uh, let's see. I think we're covered there, um, let's go on to, uh, let's see. Talked about fire protection, impacts of emergency services, and P, and, um, maybe, maybe Q. Um, I think that's talking about the, well, we already talked about that, the way, the way of the right to protest, special district providing, uh, water and wastewater treatments, system improvements, but it's, uh, you're going to have onsite stuff there, uh, agricultural operations in the vicinity. S is, talks about the ninety-foot wide easement with the Bureau of Rec, that diagonal easement, it's just important to point out, um, in future homeowners are going to be, need to make sure that that notice is given, hopefully, be available to them anyway. There's restrictions on planting trees and shrubs and things on that, construction of buildings on that easement. Looks like, T. All right, um, let's go on to eleven.
Okay.
Questions, Commissioners?
Okay, eleven, um, eleven, the condition number eleven, um, uh, is with regard to the Montana Pollution Discharge Elimination System, the MPDES permit, um, it, that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on agriculture, impacts on road and traffic under local services, and impacts on the natural environment.
Let me discuss this one as well, then, you're going to have to get a permit if they threw over an acre of ground.
Correct.
So, kind of it was, we talked about the findings, we were talking about the, the ways that those be mitigated, right, in, in partnership with that, so, all right, twelve.
Twelve, twelve relates to the need for, um, a stormwater drainage plan, uh, to, um, uh, be reviewed and approved by the Montana Department of Environmental Quality, that mitigates findings of fact under impacts on natural environment and impacts on road and traffic under local services.
Thirteen is just signage plan.
Correct.
Shouldn't say just, but signage plan and traffic control, that, it work with Public Works on that, and that's really under roads, traffic, and local services as well, so I think we can blow by that one, we're not blow by it, but acknowledge it and recognize we've already talked about it, how about that? Fourteen.
Fourteen, um, is proposed road names, uh, for all roads, uh, needs to be submitted to the county address coordinator for review and approval.
Okay.
Fifteen, um, relates to, uh, uh, the applicant, um, shall at their expense complete, uh, improvements, those are going to be things, um, such as necessary improvements required by a stormwater drainage plan, Montana Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, Vegetation Manage Plan, Management Plan and Weed Management Plan, um, installation of mail delivery facilities and utilities.
Okay.
Condition number sixteen, um, relates to the creation of a rural improvement district to address maintenance and repair of the internal road network. Condition number seventeen, um, uh, relates to rural improvement, uh, creation or amendment of a rural improvement district, um, for maintenance, preservation, or in repair of fire protection systems, um, unless the fire protection system is maintained by the fire protection authority having jurisdiction or a public water supply system that provides adequate funding to maintain the system. Uh, condition number eighteen, uh, is with regard to, um, establishing rural improvement district to contribute to the Grasslands Rural Improvement District, um, and the Pleasant Valley Rural Improvement District, uh, to address maintenance and preservation of Carmen Road that provides ingress and egress route for the subdivision. Condition number nineteen, um, uh, relates to the need to apply for address assignments, um, with the county address coordinator. Number twenty relates to the in, uh, the need to install a fence along the edge of, um, uh, easement, um, and the private irrigation ditch easement, um, to be constructed of woven wire, uh, at least three feet in height, um, two strands of barbed wire, um, if open ditch is, i- if the irrigation ditch remains open.
Right, if they bury it, then that one.
Exactly.
Is met, essentially.
Condition number twenty-one, um, are standard conditions essentially requiring that the, um, property, property owner provide proof that property taxes and special assessments have been paid for the current tax year, and then B requires that the applicant is the lawful owner of the property. And finally, condition number twenty-two, um, just notes that the preliminary approval is enforced for three calendar years.
Enforced for three calendar years, and if for some reason that, um, working diligently on their project and don't get it done in that amount of time, they can come back to the county for an extension if, if there's reason for that.
That's correct, the subdivision regulations do have a provision for extension.
Yes. Commissioners, how about questions related to the conditions of approval? Seems like, uh, they've covered all of our bases for the most part, and, uh, ready to move forward? So, with that, Commissioners, we would need a motion here to adopt the conclusion that the adverse impacts of the proposed Bitterroot Estate subdivision can be mitigated through the conditions of approval as, as have been recommended and presented here.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
If you agree and seconded, approve the conditions, further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, now, we're back to the global motion that made in the very beginning, and that global motion was to approve the, s- the, uh, preliminary plat application, conditionally approved the preliminary plat application of Bitterroot Estate subdivision, and I just wanted to say before we, before we, uh, vote on this, that we're all in agreement that we're including now in that global motion the passage of the variance, the acceptance or adoption of the findings of fact and conclusions, as well as the conditions of approval, is that? We got an agreement there, Commissioner?
I think you covered everything.
All right.
Andy.
Great. With that, uh, any further discussion before we vote? Thank, I just want to thank you, this is a lot of work, it's a long day, and appreciate our applicants enduring this as well, uh, hopefully, we have adequate information on the record that would allow either Commissions that come after us and or landowners that come after you and or, hopefully not, but maybe someday a court that has to say what happened today, that they get a good record and are able to make decisions based on that record, so. With that, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay, congratulations, and, uh, good luck moving forward, Rachel will be your guide and some of the.
Good job, Rachel.
Yeah, great job, Rachel, thank you. All right, anything further about this topic? We'll move on to, uh, public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the Commission but not on today's agenda, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing no further public comment, we will stand adjourned, thank you all.